Need to learn not to, not to check out.
Hey, we're ready.
Okay.
Hey, guys.
Good morning. It's, this is the Provo Municipal Council Work Meeting on February 11th at 11:00 AM. It's currently 11:09. And let's do a roll call, starting with Councilmember Bogdan.
Becky Bogdan.
Rachel Whipple.
Gary Garrett.
George Hanley.
Trish McKay.
And we are, go ahead, Clay. And, and we are joined by members of the staff and administration as well. We are joined, I believe, by Councilmember Christensen online. And expect to be joined by Councilmember Hogan soon. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on by the chair. When speaking, please be sure to use your microphone so that the record is clear and those attending virtually can hear also. Please be sure to limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation, please step out of the meeting room. Our first item is to approve, it's proposed that we approve the following minutes as contained in our packet, January 28th Work Meeting and November 19th Council Meeting. Are there any requested changes to those minutes or objections to the approval? If not, we'll declare those minutes approved by unanimous consent. We'll now move to a discussion regarding the council appointments to the Elected Official Compensation Commission, presented by Michael Sanders.
Hey, thank you, Council. So, over the week, we had some conversations offline regarding who the council would as opposed to appoint to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission. Those we have is David Shipley, David Wright, and Michael Ann Gardner. And right now, we're just looking for a motion directing staff to submit these names to the HR Department for inclusion in the Elected Official Compensation Commission.
Any questions for Michael? If not, can we have a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we accept the names that Michael has, yeah, we accept the appointees that Michael has designated, but David Wright, David Shipley, and Michael Ann Gardner to the, what is it called again?
Elected Official Compensation Commission.
To what he said. And that we move it forward so that you guys can contact them, put them on the committee.
I'll second that.
And now for a vote, Councilmember Hogan. I'm sorry, Councilmember Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yeah.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
And Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Is Counselor Christensen online? As I'm thinking about it, I don't think he can join till noon. He had another meeting at 11:00. So, all right, then that motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Michael. Next, we are going to hear a biannual report from the Victim Services Grant Funding Group. That will be presented by the Victim Services Coordinator, Laye Fair.
Thank you for having us today. My name's Lee Horey. I'm the Coordinator over the Victim Services Program. This is our team. This is Kim Thane, Denise Hernandez, and Estrella Sanchez. She's on the go for just a couple of months. I'm still getting used to all the names. Oh, you bet. Oh, perfect. Um, part of the reason that we are here today is we are partially funded by Volca Grant. And Volca Grant has requirements that in a grant cycle, we need to report to the city council twice in that grant cycle. So you'll also hear from us one more time before July. Just kind of let you know a little bit about us, about our program and the things that we do and kind of some of how we guide, how, how we do some of the things we do. So, we have five members total. We have one member that's not here right now, and that person is a part-time advocate. She's funded by the CDBG grant or the Community Development Block grant. And she is assigned to our court as our court advocate. So she attends court every Wednesday with all the victims of domestic violence. The rest of us here are full-time. Two of us are funded by the city, and then the other two are funded by Volca. We are all, our office is actually housed at the Police Department, and we're part of the Criminal Investigation Division, which is with all the detectives, the Special Victims Unit, and then us at the Victim Services. Two of our advocates here also speak Spanish, and they're able to help and provide all the services to all of our victims that speak Spanish, which is invaluable for our team. Because that happens, we have quite a large popularity, popular population that requires that, those benefits. And then I also wanted to just mention our mission statement, to provide crisis intervention, emotional support, and critical service referrals to aid victims and their children, as well as to promote community awareness on victimization issues. And then part of the Volca grant requirement also is that it's not just me that presents, that the people that are funded and/or have part of the grant also have to participate. So you get to hear from all of us today. Kim Thane is going to come first. She is actually funded by the city, but she's a match on that grant. So that's where she gets to be involved as well. And then I'll just let, then I'll take a turn, and then I'll close at the end.
Well, good morning. I'm going to talk a little bit about the people that we serve. And you'll see on this list, there's a wide range of victimizations that we support and provide services to. But we just wanted to highlight a couple, primarily the ones that are the most common. The first is domestic violence, and a domestic violence case is involving intimate partners or family members or roommates, anyone that co-habitates. And just as an example, over this past weekend, a few of the domestic violence cases that we responded to, one involved intimate partners and the other involved roommates. So these are pretty frequent occurrences for us. The next victimization is sexual assault. And these are all forms of unwanted and inappropriate sexual contact. While this applies to any age of victim, being here in Provo where we have a large college-age population, we work with a lot of college-age students, and we've seen an uptick in that over the past couple of years due to dating apps. So unfortunately, those have contributed to our work there. Next is stalking and harassment, and this is repeated or unwanted contact or communications, especially if the victim has made it clear that they do not want these contacts anymore. We also serve crimes against children. So this can be physical abuse, neglect, sexual abuse, or any violation toward a child. Another kind of all-encompassing category are unexpected and emergency-type situations, homicide, suicide, or any unexpected death, and also other community emergencies. Most recently, we responded to an apartment fire that displaced many families, and so our entire team responded to that.
So I'm going to discuss what a typical day's work looks like here. Again, I've only been here a short amount of time, but usually what we do is we go through all of the cases, we get, go through all the reports daily, and we try to, or we divvy them up between all of us advocates. And we contact the victims over the phone or in person. We also assist with protective orders and stalking injunctions, as well as civil protective orders. We collaborate with police and detectives, and again, like our on-call assignments here, sometimes, like Kim mentioned, we get called out for horrible accidents or like fires and things like that where we all have to go out. We also collaborate with community outreach partners. Our big ones are the Family Justice Center, The Refuge, and we, and like the Food and Care Coalition as well, and we work very closely with our prosecutors.
I'm going to be talking about, a little bit about how we serve our community and our victims. One of the biggest things I believe we do is write protective orders, and again, this is anywhere from like criminal or civil protective orders, especially for our Spanish-speaking clients who don't speak English, we usually help write those for them. We educate victims about the court and criminal justice process. This can be really challenging, especially if it's not something that you do daily, so it's a little bit overwhelming for our victims. So we just make sure that they know what's going to happen, the process to that, and kind of each step going forward. Another thing we do is accompany our victims to court, and like we said, we have a specific advocate that's designated to go in court every single Wednesday. But on top of this, we also accompany victims to either like protective order hearings or cases up District Court or anything like that. We also have interviews with our detectives, and these usually involve any sex assault cases. So we will sit in with our victims and the detective and provide resources at the end for them. We obtain victim input for prosecutors. We have legal meetings with our DB prosecutor every Monday, and he usually tells us the authors that he's going to give our defendants, and we relay that onto the victims. Or if the victims have any input for the prosecutors, that's usually when we'll tell him the input for that. We connect victims to the community resources. So this is again, like The Refuge and things like that. We provide crisis support and death notifications, so safety planning, making sure our victims have somewhere safe to stay for the night. And we do a lot of community outreach. The Family Justice Center happens every Tuesday from five to eight. We all take turns going to that, and it's just a, a lot of different resources go to this, and it's a place where the community can go and just kind of, it's kind of an all-for-one kind of thing. We do college presentations, and then we do information booths. We recently just went to a sex assault booth that happened at BYU and the. So, these are our statistics for 2024. And we, for 2024, we, for domestic and family violence, there was 618 victims. For adult sexual assault, there was 227. For child sexual assault, there was 110. For child abuse, there was 148. And these are just things that we should note. And an important, another thing to note is that these are just what has been reported. So we are continuing, and that's where education is really a big part of our program as well, so that we can assist more of our victims. Do you want to talk about? For elder abuse, it's a little lower. It's at 10, just because Adult Protective Services is the one that usually takes care of those kinds of cases. For stalking and harassment, we had 311 cases, and then for adult physical assaults, we had 227. And out of all of these, we provided 7,829 resources to all of our victims.
Are these numbers based on someone who's filed a report? Or are they just any, like, do you charge them to be pressed, or is there any?
Charges don't have to be pressed, but they are just, we usually get them from police reports that have been done. But some of them can be just like informational reports, and we still reach out to the victims.
Okay, so you get, so you guys actively go through the police reports to look for people to help as opposed to waiting for victims to come to you?
And we also, yeah, we also get victims up. We'll just call our office and have questions, and there's.
But you do actively, you guys actually call from reports without them soliciting you at all?
Yeah.
Okay.
And do the police refer them to you?
Yes, and no, yeah, it just.
Yes, I wanted to touch on yours. Yes, we follow up, we check all the reports every day from the officers that have done the reports from the day before. So we go through all of those, and any of those that we've covered, we call and reach out to them and offer any resources. Part of the reason why we want to do this for them is they've just experienced something traumatic in their lives. And I don't know if you've had, have your family or friends that have been involved with any of these type of things, but it's hard for them to deal with anything at that time, let alone then having to navigate all these different systems. So that's where we come into place. And then tell me, what was your question again?
Oh, do the police officers refer people to you?
They refer to us. If we're on duty during the day, they'll call our office, and we can go help them that way. Sometimes we'll come out and go on scene. Sometimes we'll have a victim just come to the front counter. And then after hours, we, there's always somebody on call. So if it's in the middle of the night and somebody is a victim, then, then they can either call us, and we can help them over the phone. If it's something where we need to work with emergency housing or something like that, then the advocates will come in and help with whatever they need that way.
So in my case, with my stalker, I went in and I reported it, and they did offer me to have Victim Services to come, and I told them no. So I can testify that they do that. As far as looking through the stuff and having them contact me, I can say that didn't happen, and maybe that's because I told them no. But yeah, I can say that.
Yep. One last thing I wanted to mention is just part of the Volca, the last several years consistently, every year, that Volca grant has been decreased from, due to federal funding. So in that time, there has been a time the Volca grant paid for a lot of our, they covered our training, they did, you know, different of our resources, different things like that. So now the only thing covered by the Volca grant are these two employees. So if we get another decrease this year, it will affect our staff. So I just wanted to make sure that you, that painted a picture as well. And I also want to comment that a lot of our numbers, that's part of the Volca grant, is that we have some way of tracking. And several years ago, we, we've had this program at Provo City for probably over 20 years that I can recount back, that we've been serving victims in this exact type of situation. And in that time, we've had, you know, just different opportunities to help to, to grow the program, but at different times with the federal funding and the way that happens, it, it kind of ebbs and flows. And unfortunately, the last several years, we've seen more of a decrease than anything that has, has gone up. So I appreciate you again letting us come today and explain our program. Again, like, we'll see you again probably in June as part of that requirement to keep that grant, so.
Lee, do the numbers that you reported include, the numbers of victims include those that you reach out to, but that decline?
Yes, yes, and a lot of victims sometime.
Full picture.
A lot of them, just depends on their situation. Some people need a lot of help, and some people don't need very much help at all, and anywhere in that gamut. I started to mention earlier, we pull those stats, part of that requirement was having a way to pull it, and that we have a system called VS Tracking that is specifically for victims for, for us. It's even separate than our records management sys, system through the Police Department, and that keeps track of all those different victims. But those victims then can actually, we can offer all the resources, and some will take a few of them, some of them will not. You know, some of them might already have housing. If it's an emergency housing situation, there are times that we might, some people have family, some people have friends, some people have absolutely no one. Someone have been brought here and have been completely controlled, that they have no other options, period. So that's when we utilize our partners with The Refuge, The Women's Shelter, to find emergency housing that way.
Counselor Hanley?
Curious to know if the, the Spanish-speaking population has been, I mean, I, I'm sure that under normal circumstances, there may be some who are hesitant to reach out for help because of their immigration status. But in the current climate, I'm worried that maybe that's even more of a problem. Have you noticed any, any decline in their willingness to get help?
We have been concerned about that, but we are still getting victims that are calling in, but we have those that have had that concern. Luckily, they're really open about that, and they know that we are able to still help them regardless of any status whatsoever.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for your presentation today. We appreciate that. Thank you. Are we still having trouble with the audio? Okay, we'll take a brief break. Okay, we'll recess for just five minutes while we address the audio. Stay close. Bye. Even at 11:00? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So it helps.
Yeah, you don't want me angry.
We have addressed our audio. However, if you're trying to listen on YouTube, apparently there are some challenges still with that. So we'd like you, we'd like to direct you to Zoom for, to follow Zoom. The instructions are at provo.agenda.org. agendas.provo.org for directions to connect to this, to Zoom. So item three has been continued, which fortunately puts us right back on schedule. Item four, a resolution indicating the intent to make an adjustment to the common boundary between Provo and Springville along 1400 North in Springville. This will be presented by Jessica Donahue.
Yes, so this has actually been brought to council before, but like annexations, it operates on a very strict timeline, and it was not certified in time, so we're just bringing it back to you, starting with the resolution. This is the area that will be brought over to Springville so that the Gateway Crossing Development can combine all of their plats and develop, I believe is their plan. So that's the, the land that will be brought over into Springville. And then as far as next steps go, we're bringing the resolution to you now. Springville is also bringing their resolution to their council. From there, there's a 60-day window for written public comment to be submitted if someone opposes this boundary line adjustment. After which, we bring an ordinance back to you. Once that has been approved, we send it to the state for certification. Are there any questions?
So this will come to our council tonight?
Yes.
And Springville's council tonight also?
I'm not sure which agenda they're on. I haven't seen that, but it's, they have the same resolution, and it is with them.
The 60-day window begins after it's been presented to both councils.
Correct.
Any questions for Jessica? Great, thank you, Jessica. We'll see you again tonight. Next, item five is a resolution to place a 14,038-square-foot parcel of ground located generally at 3100 West 240 North on the surplus property list, and authorize the mayor to dispose of the property, presented by Tara Riddle.
Good afternoon. We were approached by the developer just to the west of the subject property about being able to incorporate this parcel of ground into their subdivision plot. This parcel has been used in the past for access up to the Provo River for maintenance purposes. We acquired the property back in 2005, and it has been used for the access since that period of time. The parcel, as Kim mentioned, contains just over 14,000 square feet. As traditional with any property that we're considering for surplus, we do a developmental, a departmental review with all of the departments through the city just to identify if there's any future uses for this parcel. And it was considered by those departments, and they were all in agreement as long as they continue to have access through another part of the subdivision plot. We did have the property appraised. It was appraised at $36,000, and that's what the developer will be paying us for the property. Okay, and as I mentioned, the developer is going to go ahead and provide us access up on the north end of their development for our continued maintenance of the Provo River, and that'll be through a dedicated street in the subdivision plot, which I can show you. Here's the plot. You can see up on the north end. They've dedicated an area for us to go across the adjoining property owner that we already have an access easement through to continue being able to maintain the Provo River. So at this point, what we're requesting is for this item to be moved to the next council meeting, which will be on the 25th, or a resolution to surplus the property, and then allow the mayor to dispose the property at our city code. Are there any questions? Yes.
Do we, do we need to purchase that easement access, or no?
No, we already have the easement.
The, this little one up there?
No, that's all part of this deal, is that they're going to grant that to us, and then they're going to buy the road from us.
Okay, and that easement will be reported and everything?
It'll be recorded on the subdivision plot.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions for Tara? Thank you, Tara. See you next week, in two weeks. Next, we have item six, an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately .74 acres of real property generally located at 916 West 1150 South from the one-family residential R18 Zone to the one-family residential R16 Zone in the Lakeview Neighborhood, presented also by Jessica Donahue.
Yes, so here is the map of the proposed rezon area. As you can see, it's currently just a single-family dwelling with a rather large rear yard. The proposed rezon brings it from R18 down to R16 so that the property owner can subdivide and create an additional single-family dwelling. Both lots will be still at 8,000 square feet, and the additional single-family dwelling will be up for sale. He's, he is planning on selling that lot. So here's kind of the proposed concept plan to move his parking to the rear, and then just have that drive access run through to the proposed new lot with just an additional single-family dwelling on it. Are there any questions?
I didn't totally get the picture. So the house is on one side, the driveway's the middle?
Yes.
And the garage is on the left. Is that going to be the deal? Because that looks like a whole house right there. Is he just demolishing that house?
What's proposed to be demolished is his garage?
So the garage looks just like the house? Do they look like their?
Either color things.
The little one's the garage.
Yes.
So this here is the garage, that's part of their back patio.
So what's that other building right there?
This structure is the actual house.
So what's the other structure over on the other side?
That's another house.
That's a separate lot.
Someone has his house.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
My other question was, can we put in the development agreement that it has to be sold?
We haven't asked for a development agreement on this, but if we want to ask for a development agreement for this, I believe that we can work with the advocate on that.
How do we know that it would be sold, or?
You've been told that both will be sold at this point. We haven't gotten anything arriving, but we've been told both.
So I have a question, Jessica?
Yes.
This is my neighborhood. It's not just my area, but it is my neighborhood. 1150 is a collector road, and not only that, but it's on the Active Transportation Master Plan. And at some point, it was decided that possibly in the future, there would be no parking on that road, which makes a lot of sense if you have, especially it is slated to go all the way through, right? All the way through to the. especially it is slated to go all the way through, right? All the way through to the sports park. Now, that's a large home. A very large home. And I'm seeing the, what the blue and the purple are their three parking spaces?
Yes.
Is that going to be enough? Cause that's a very large.
Um, that's what is the code requirement. So we can't ask them to provide more than those three parking spaces for the existing home. Um, so that's really all we can require them to provide.
So they're going from four parking spaces to three?
Uh, right now technically I believe they would only have two as I believe that is just a single car garage.
Double garage.
Instead of double garage? Okay. So yes, they would be going down by one.
For example?
By one spot.
I thought when I drove past it was like a double. And it's right like on the property line. So that's my concern is to make sure that they have enough parking so that they're not parking on the road. Especially in the future where that's a great possibility that there will be no availability of parking.
Oh, bring that up with the applicant. Let him know about that concern. Thanks.
I've got a question too. So looking at this, I, I love how we've got the image of the new house just on half of the, the big lot. Why is the proposal not to build two new houses back there? Because it looks like there's room. Is it that we can't do a flag lot and have them share the drive?
Based on, um, discussions with Public Works, our code requirement right now for a flag lot to have to address two properties is to have twenty-five feet in width and that was from Public Works and that was the recent text amendment that came through. Um, the applicant has gone back to talk to Public Works to see if there is another way around it. So far there, they haven't come up with any conditions that we've been made aware of that would allow them to have two flag lots back there while still meeting all the concerns of Public Works.
Okay.
So the new condition they've come up and staff meeting on Monday with, with Public Works. So that is that, that exact question was asked at planning commission. Why can't you do two lots back there? The reason was that under standards today, if you tried to put two lots back there, each lot would have to have its own water lateral, sewer lateral. There's not be ten feet apart. But what has recently been discussed by the works is what if you put a water main and a sewer main down the flagstaff and service two lots off of that? It dodges that separation requirement that would make two lots impossible. So that scenario is being considered by Public Works right now. If that were to happen, it would probably have to come back to you for a code amendment. But the property owner would like to do two lots back there and as you can see, even with two lots back there, you'd be, I think in excess of ten thousand square foot lots. There are one eighty seven. So the density is appropriate, even if there were two lots right there. We're just now going through the gyrations to try to figure out how to make that work.
That's, that's really helpful to know. Just the, the way the image was, I'm like, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jessica. And this will also be on our agenda for tonight.
Correct.
Thank you. The next item number seven is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately one point six-two acres of real property generally located at eleven twenty-two south nine hundred east from the light manufacturing M one zone to the medium density residential MDR zones in the Spring Creek neighborhood presented by one of our planners, Dustin Wright.
All right, thank you. Yeah. So this item, uh, you can see the location here that they're requesting to have rezoned from that M one zone to the MDR. Um, here's a look at the current zoning and the future land use map. Where it shows it's LDR. So that's kind of a guiding document. Um, I did some calculations on the properties around that, uh, within that LDR zone. Uh, the LDR zone allows twelve units per acre. The town homes and condos around that are above that twelve units per acre. I think this shows better. So the applicant is requesting, um, to build a changes. They can build this prop, this project. Um, and their density would be at twenty units per acre. So it would be, um, pretty comparable to, uh, see if I got a image of the other, sorry. So across the street there, that's the, the town homes across the street that are at that, um, eighteen units per acre. So it's going to fit within that as far as density goes and be a comparable, um, product there. So staff is, is comfortable with that, uh, density. The applicant has gone to neighborhood meetings and heard some concerns and things as far as um, owner occupancy and things like that. So they've proffered a development agreement that's with this. Um, so their development agreement would be that they restrict, um, how many units are able to be uh, rented out. So, uh, I believe thirty-five percent of the overall project would be able to be rented at any, any one time. So they have proffered a development agreement that would limit them to that. They'd do a deed restriction on the property. So it would run with the land. Um, they'd have an HOA formed that would, um, have to approve each, uh, rental within the properties. So they'd be watching that thirty-five percent limit. And then not approving any above that. So those are the things that they're proffering to, to help mitigate any of those concerns. Um, and then at planning commission, there was some discussion there about what that ratio should be, um, fifty percent, forty percent, whatever for rental versus owner occupancy. They afforded their recommendation to the council for this thirty-five um, percent, uh, rental and um, but it's going to be something, I guess, this council that you guys can discuss and help provide that feedback back to staff on all future projects.
Okay. So to be clear, they'll have a development agreement where only max of thirty-five percent can be rented at one time. And that's in perpetuity.
Correct.
I think it's awesome. Great. Yep.
Councilor Bogdan.
But could those percentages be changed by an HOA once the ownership changes?
And so they're doing a, they're doing a development agreement. So if they wanted to change that, they'd have to bring it back to the city council to, to amend their development.
So even the homeowners association, five years from now, if they wanted to change that percentage, they'd have to bring it to the city council?
Yeah. So the homeowners association is just kind of an extra step that they're tying into that development agreement. Um, so you have the development agreement that spells that out. And then they're also having the HOA be kind of the the police force there to help with that.
Thanks. I went and drove the area and I think what they're asking for is perfect. Thanks.
Any other questions for Dustin? So thirty-five percent of twenty units would be seven units probably, huh? Is that about right? That would be rented and thirteen be offered for sale. That is correct. Thank you, Justin. We'll, um, see you again tonight then.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you. Next, item eight is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at eight ninety-five west two thousand north from the residential conservation zone to the low density residential zone in the Carterville neighborhood presented by planning supervisor, Aaron Artmore.
Hey, thank you. Uh, so this one you could tell by the, the file number there, the twenty nineteen is the year that was started in the review process. So it's been going for a little bit. Uh, there's been a lot of iterations. And I think the main thing with this request is uh, that they are requesting a zone, LDR zone that technically could allow more on the site. But through those iterations of staff review, this is the most they can get out of the property. Um, so sometimes we come to you with a, a zone request that we want to tie it down to a, with a development agreement, right? Because they could do more than what they're showing in the concept plan. This one, that is not the case. The, uh, three units is, is really the most they can get. If we can go to the next slide. Do I have control? Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Bit of bad take.
So there's a picture of the site. You can see, um, what we like about this is it's making better use of that long parcel with just kind of wasted space in the back, um, that's been used for trailer storage. Um, so that home would come down and be replaced uh, with a, with a home facing the street as similar to what you see there in the, the conceptual elevation rendering. Uh, but then there'd be two additional units behind there. One attached to the, the front unit. Then common space, yard space for the, the renters or owners, uh, and then the third unit detached towards the back with guest parking behind there and, uh, fire turnaround. Um, so, so that's the concept that's tied to this rezone. We think the rezone makes sense. Plan commission liked that as a, a good infill project. Uh, getting three more, uh, for sale units in the neighborhood.
Questions for Aaron?
So the neighborhood has brought up that whole street needs upgrades in super modern capacity in order to take themselves out of the RC zone. Is that true?
So there's, is interesting, the, the comments and, and feedback that we got from the public on this one. It wasn't so much concerns with the proposal here. It is more concerned with future development potential along the whole street. Um, but as we told them, as I've told them, uh, they can request a zone change in a concept plan for their own properties. If they want to get together and do one large rezone request, they can do that. And then those would be reviewed individually, case by case. And identifying what utility infrastructure needs to be upgraded, what street infra, infrastructure needs to be upgraded. Um, so there's always those potential, right? So I don't think, um, I don't think it relates to being a concern with this request. I think there's, they're just curious about the potential for them to do the same thing.
Okay.
Um, and as, as you looked on the streets, uh, there isn't a lot of these, these deep lots that could do this similar thing. Uh, it would almost have to be property owners getting together and, and doing a redevelopment plan for multiple properties at one time.
But don't we usually require? If a developer wants to come in, well, this developer, for instance, he's going to have to head to the existing sewer and water connection, right? But don't we, don't we require some of those to do some upgrades too?
Yeah, there's going to be some upgrades tied to this, this project plan. When it, if the zone's approved, they'll come back with the project plan and building permits. And there's going to be some, some upgrades that they'll have to, they pay for.
And that's fair throughout the city that if somebody wants to come in and redevelop a property, there's potential that they would have to come in and replace even the main line that's going down the middle of the street.
Right.
Larger or smaller, most likely larger, right?
There's, there's regular offsite improvements that have to be done with these type of projects.
And usually it's, it's borne by the developer, right?
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
You're right.
Councilor Handley.
Uh, yeah, this is just a, a editorial comment about the RC zone generally. And I think, um, this is, I, I love this project. I think infill projects like this are really smart. They're great way to take advantage of, of space that's not being well utilized. And in the RC zone, there are a lot of properties that have smaller houses on bigger lots where there's a lot of opportunity there, but we've kind of frozen them out a little bit with the RC designation. So I don't know if that will be part of our future discussion of, of zoning in the city, but, um, um, it would be nice if we could think of ways to redefine conservation of resident, residential neighborhoods, but in a way that allows that flexibility so that we don't always have to come in with a zone change to say we need an infill here or there. I don't know. Um, anyways, just
No.
throwing that out there. It seems like efficiency and, um, messaging to the public would be helpful if we, we came up with a different way of designating what we're, what we're looking for there. Cause right now it just seems like the, the, um, hill they have to climb to get to this kind of a project that's a little too steep. Uh, anyway.
You'll see it potentially get easier with the total fourteen rewrite, uh, tied to that will be some subsequent zone changes throughout the city, uh, as we get rid of some zones. Uh, that will have to rezone those to the closest comparable zone that we keep on the books. So I think you'll see some of those opportunities in the future.
Good, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Erin.
Okay, thanks.
So we'll see you again tonight on this item. Next, we have item nine, an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at two thousand north Canyon Road from the single family residential R one eight zone to medium density residential MDR zone in the Pleasant View neighborhood presented by planner Nancy Robinson.
Hello.
Robinson.
So, um, this is one that you guys continued from, uh, December seventeenth. So nothing from our point of view has changed. Um, you asked the developer to, uh, see what they could come up with in, in terms of, um, comparables and, and how they worked with, uh, rentals versus selling units. And, and I assume that you've got that, his email. Um, it was attached or, you know, thought I had attached it. Did you look at that at all?
You, you're talking about the housing one that he sent in?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Of the comparable market.
Very interesting. Yes.
Market analysis.
I think he just went against his point.
So, um, I mean, I don't really have any answers for, or, you know, his, his portion of that. He is supposed to be here tonight at the meeting.
I don't know. For me, it completely proves our point that investor properties are going to sell for more. And if we do corner, corner occupancy requirement, those houses will stay be more of a normal price and not be out, not create investors to outplay them and make them more expensive for families. So it, I'm just, it's, it just reiterates the fact that I think these need to be for sale.
Other questions, comments? This will be on our agenda tonight also.
I have a comment.
Councilor Christensen.
Uh, I agree with Catrice's comment. Um, we asked the developer to come back with something that would help us with owner occupancy and instead came back with a research paper on why investors make a lot of money in Provo. It's not serving what we need in Provo. And so I understand the need for some rental and I understand the need for some um, owner occupancy, but, uh, anything, anything short of you know, like a fifty fifty split, just to me in that particular site in that neighborhood is heading the wrong direction. So this to me is a quick discussion tonight. I, I would not support this.
It's interesting to me to note that all, um, low density and medium density properties to the north of this plot are, um, owner occupied. And those to the south medium density, high density are all apartments. So to me, this is a good transition zone, a good area to kind of um, blend the two communities. Other thoughts or questions? For Nancy? If not, we'll have an opportunity to continue this discussion tonight and, uh, ask any questions of the developer. And, um, thank you, Nancy.
Yep.
All right. This brings us to our, our break. We're going to take a twenty minute break now and come back together at twelve twenty for additional discussion. We'll begin again our council work session. The next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding council prior, priorities for this, um, upcoming fiscal year. We discussed these earlier and are just going to review and see what next steps we can take in this process. This will be led in this discussion by council executive director, Justin Harris.
All right. Thanks so much, council. So, um, this document here on the screen, um, contains the three items that the council had discussed and voted on during our January seventh meeting, um, that were out of the scoring were the three highest priorities. Um, subsequent to that meeting, staff reached out to council members uh, to kind of drill down and see what these really meant. Um, and received some feedback, but really wanted to take time in this.
Um and received some feedback, but really wanted to take time in this meeting. To refine what those budget priorities for these categories meant. Um I've taken some liberties and kind of put some things together. Please feel free to change. As much as possible as you would like. I will not be offended. Um I just tried to capture the essence of what. What the council um had discussed. Um the first item was related to housing and owner occupancy. Um and what was framed as reimagining enforcement. Um and so there was quite a bit of feedback on funding the purchase of. Of software or a software system that's capable of scraping data from. County land records to create a searchable database. And there were a lot of other criteria in there that kind of. Condensed it to say to say that much. Um there's kind of a second part to this, a conversation. Um this idea was came up in a a previous work meeting and had a subsequent conversation with Bill Pepperoni. Um on enforcement being a a very big priority of the council. And currently how um code enforcement officers are going to visit. The properties of of homes with violations um in sets of two. Um one suggestion that came about was supplying body cameras for code enforcement officers, much like. They've done with parking enforcement to allow, I'll use the the buzzword that police has has used as a force multiplier. So as opposed to requiring two bodies at a door, you can do twice as much work if you're going by yourself. And if there's a in. An extra level of comfort and um I think also an extra level of. Maybe um well, protection response from um from those that code enforcement officers are visiting with or may. If they have have a body camera on them. So um threw that in there just to start a conversation, but really wanted to kind of go. Um through each priority and see if this is really what the vision of the council was or is. Um and try to drill down and make some changes so we can give the administration a little more um detail on what what y'all are looking for. So I'll kind of leave leave that one out there and see if. We've hit this on the head or if we need to go back to the drawing board.
Is is Craig on and able to speak to the the software idea?
Yes, I'm on.
Craig, have you been able to have conversations with people in the administration? Or I guess in the tech world to know if such a software already exists or if we would need to pay for the development of something?
Um I had an initial discussion with Bill and with Scott, and this was uh I don't know, back in November. Um and there was a developer who actually came and was talking, so it's. Soundable. Um I haven't heard a word since then, so I have no idea. The develop- the developer sounded like. There were things that were already adjacent to what they were doing, that this would not be a heavy lift. I'm not saying there wouldn't be an expense to it, but it's not like. We're asking him to create something that that uh was foreign to them. This was like in their wheelhouse. But I've I've had no information back uh in terms of what's happened since that meeting.
I know part of what Craig and I have talked about doing is hearing back from the administration related to how. Their priorities relate to ours and then meeting with Scott again to um discussing greater detail. Tap into his creativity relative to reimagining enforcement. And I think that's kind of where we left. Um part of where we left this discussion recently, um Justin, was that. As part of this, I think at this time we want to hear. Relative to their priorities for this year. So Scott, would you mind sharing with us?
Yeah, maybe on the software, Bill. I know we did have a conversation and we had staff looking. For both what is available in the industry. Tried and true software has been some of our best success stories. If we can find a software that other communities are utilizing, sometimes. I always portray it, the salesman will always tell you they can do something. And then when it's time to get it delivered, sometimes that can be a difficulty, but. I don't know if many people have made any progress on that, Bill, looking for other communities and software that they use for this purpose.
Um yes, Scott Johnson has that further conversations.
Scott Johnson has had further conversations with the software provider that Mr. Christensen was just referring to. Um I'm just actually asking him out of the meeting, but um it's a. Was going to be or supposed to be a scrubbing software similar to granted that you've already funded. That software goes through short terminals. This software is supposed to go through more. Uh long term models places, um websites where people would put apartments where we may have over interactive problems. Or rented units that are not supposed to be rental units. So I'm sure that status updated map that Scott Johnson has been working on with that provider. That's the only software update. I didn't have the software I'm aware of. We were like, yeah.
So definitely it's still a possibility as part of the objective, you know, for this budget. So it seems like it's still a there's still a chance.
Mm hmm. Okay, well, that that's a good update, helpful to know.
Yeah, and that's far more modest of a thing than what we were hoping for. Something that would look through county land records and do kind of a comprehensive. Assessment of the different property types and then compare that with the rental dwelling licenses and rental listings and things like that. Which I think maybe. Does not exist and it would be expected to develop such a thing. So it's it's good to know what it is that already likely exists that you're looking for. Um. And to know that it's much more modest than our big council visions we're hoping for, but could still be quite useful.
Gary, can I?
Yes, Counselor. I I'm just curious if what kind of um financing this. Would require the body cameras and this more um. Uh poss- possible software as opposed to developing something from scratch. I mean, it 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 sounds to me like we're talking about a lot a much lower expense for this particular budget priority than. Then we had contemplated, which is fine, but if it is lower, then maybe we we don't. It's not that big of a target. I mean, we could say this is a priority, but um it's we had other things under hu- housing and owner occupancy. That we were contemplating as well, and maybe we could. Um anyway, you know, so do we have any sort of sense of what the price tag would be for body cameras, for example?
Just to say to boost your that question because we just bought them recently for parking enforcement and they've been helpful there. Some of the major spenders are all, but I'll give a number for her. But yeah, it seemed thus be a very cost effective way to try to double workforce. The reason why a couple of years ago, we went to doubling up enforcement officers, this I don't know if you remember, but. A couple of years ago, the zoning enforcement officer was nicely shot and killed. That was when we initiated sending people out together. Um and that's only one of the reasons we can fund these. But to us, body cameras would be would be a good way to help that workforce. We have found that in parking enforcement. There's a lot fewer confrontational situations, but you see there's a camera on them, the camera has a red light on it. They're being recorded.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that's great. Yeah, I had heard about the body camera idea until now, so I think that's great. And I couldn't read matching enforcement. That could be in the in even the operational ways in which we do this, right? We talked about having one employee just going through the RDLs and calling up on that and checking the county records. We've talked about doing software. We've talked about. Um again, changing the processes within that department. So I I think there's still a lot of, it's not all worked out yet. But there's a lot of options.
So the enforcement does cross records, county records, whenever we think that would be helpful or useful. For example, there's a. Lower townhouse development. We've heard there's been a lot of investors buying there in over occupancy. So. Very tiny records, our records, looking for anyone that's owned by LLC or some other corporation that might suggest. It's not over occupied in the community of this church. The questions I was asked about an update on software patches that you and I met with Chris Christensen.
Okay, so we've met with. This individual that's wanting to do some data scraping for us, uh went over the contract that they provided with legal and with. IS and there were a number of concerns that both legal and IS have with the contract and. What they were claiming to be able to do and the fact that it's a new company. Lot of red flags that they've had in the past, that that the city is having in the past. Jumping into situations like this. And so I'm working on RFQ to put more broadly out to see, okay, are there organizations out there? That are established that do this, that know the legality behind. Doing the data scraping and providing it and data storage and liability, all those issues. So I'm working on getting that.
Yes, um Scott Anderson.
I feel like um Scott and Bill and their team have really taken the. Priority of reimagining very serious, even in advance of the budget process. We're talking about civil versus criminal actions, which could completely change of um. Some of our compliance and be able to add to the toolbox to get things to move quicker. And and bring things to resolution faster. So there's, I know Bill's got some additional comments on that, but there. I I really feel like this priority, just in the first part of that about reimagining enforcement, is having a dramatic impact of how. Staff are looking at uh the possibilities of things they could do to enforce and enforce more efficiently.
Great, helpful, thank you.
So zoning enforcement has been talking with legal quite a bit about uh criminal prosecution and civil fines. But the other thing that's happened that is paying dividends is that several months ago, the city council. Mentioned seventeen oh three one hundred that says if there's an existing violation on a piece of property, the city will not entertain a new application. For any kind of approval that number. And we have actually started seeing that pay off. Um people have been brought into compliance because we said we would cooperate with them on another permit or application until they fixed the violation. So that's been working really well.
Do you have a timeline for that RFQ and and a sense of? How much that would cost? Um like we expect how much the bids would come in for if we need to be budgeting for this.
I I would anticipate between ten and ten and twenty thousand dollars. That's. Around the range of posts that I've received previously for similar type products. Um I mean, I'm trying, I'm I'm hoping to get it done by the end of the day where I can get it set out.
Okay. And then do we, how many body cameras would be be looking at for code enforcement officers?
Be six.
Six. And how much is that?
Uh leave there about four hundred dollars a piece.
Okay. That's fairly honest. Okay. Thank you.
So I know that our zoning officers are rock stars. I love them. They're amazing. How do they, are they comfortable with going with the just a camera and without like maybe waters with a gun?
They I have a a couple of zoning officers that are super excited to be able to utilize body cameras. Um so that A, we can be more efficient, not having to drag another code officer out when we're doing doing things. And also be able to have that verification of, okay, this is the conversation that took place. Rather than relying simply on coming back to the office or writing notes or sitting in the car afterwards and writing notes. Um we we would have that video evidence of this is the conversation that took place. This is what we agreed to and this is what. What the results essentially would be.
So they're mostly excited, but in those rare cases, they could still pair with COP.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it and that's something that I've told my my staff numerous times. If at any point you feel uncomfortable, the hairs on the back of your head are standing up. Get out of there, contact COP and go back.
That's my number one concern is that they're safe. Cause we don't want anybody shot or hit. A rock thrown at them or you know, cameras can video that and get proof, evidence, but it doesn't necessarily protect them. Okay, thanks.
And Scott Johnson, we did see your email recently. Are relative to um leaving to a resident, leaving enforcement to the officers, reporting to. Or staff, but leaving enforcement to the officers. That dialogue you had with the resident.
Yeah, yeah, we've I've I've had instances in the past with other residents. Where they've involved themselves in activities that my staff has been doing and caused issues.
Yeah.
And so seeing the potential of that happening with other cases. I want to make sure that it was very clear that this is this is the city staff's responsibility. To to actually do the investigation and enforcement.
Great. Well, it seems like uh Counselor Handley.
Well, I'm sorry, I I just wanted to follow up on what I was saying earlier. I mean, if we're talking about forty thousand, maybe fifty thousand dollars. For software and body cameras. I mean, that's a that's a simple appropriation if we needed it, um but it can certainly be folded into the budget, but it doesn't seem like. Um that's enough of a a dollar amount that significantly shifts the budget picture. I'm not trying to change the budget picture. Uh if if but if we, I I I guess I'm just thinking about um. Land acquisition was one of the other issues we had talked about with housing and owner occupancy. Um and I don't, I'm not trying to revise what we've done here. I'm just, uh I guess. Just reminding us that we have other tools like that to help with housing and owner occupancy that we probably shouldn't forget about. If especially if the budget um impact of reimagining enforcement is much lower than I I. Cause I think we were, I don't know, I sort of had a, you know, quarter million or half million dollars of investment that I wanted to make in this. And maybe there still are ways that we can use money to improve enforcement that you might come back and recommend to us. But if if it's a lot lower than that, then I think we shouldn't forget. That that's still, housing and owner occupancy is still a high priority for us. And if there's other ways to spend our budget that. Can get us um even closer to um to meeting those goals that I'm in favor of that.
Thank you, George. Counselor Christensen?
Uh I I think George makes a good point and I would not want to deviate until, and I'm not suggesting you're saying this, George, but. I would not want to deviate till we actually know what that is and that we are all confident that that is going to be the kind of. Um solution that gets us results, cause it's not just a matter of reimagining enforcement. It's actually reimagining and getting different kind of enforcement solutions and results. So um I I totally agree with you, George, and I I would want to make sure we don't take our eye off the ball in terms of. Enforcement results. That's still very much a mystery.
Great, thank you, Craig. Counselor Bogdan.
George, did I understand you correctly that you were wanting money to put into projects for building homeowner occupancy?
Well, when we, yeah, when we talked about this earlier, um land acquisition was a was a really attractive. Um option similar to that project we did on the west side for workforce housing where we own the land. Um that's a really effective way to bring the price down on uh so offering the housing options for people who are. Lower middle income.
I support that, but I'm gonna bring up the presentation that Tara did today. I mean, we're selling our land. To a developer to build more houses. And we're gonna have to trade for the easement. So to me, to sit there and say, okay, we want to take this money and buy more land. When we're selling our land and not utilizing it for that purpose is kind of weird.
But the one today is just this little strip that can't be built upon. Because we have given them clear instructions to look at the property and if it's a property that we could build on, then. There we're going to do that. And that's how they found the little one at what, two thousand north? Um so they are looking at that and every time we've had one of these come through, I look at it. I'm like, is that a buildable thing? Like the one where we've got the, yeah. The only ones that we are alienating now are ones that we could not build a house on.
Okay.
Yeah, staff has heard that priority. Tara just circulated a new parcel to Department Heads. They could pass housing on it and the issue was. The issue was raised, should we be selling this when the council has raised this priority? So it's going to come to you and you'll be able to have that discussion. Well, we we have heard that priority.
Well, with that in mind, I mean, if we're selling land, should we bank the land money and then use it that way? I mean, what's this, what was it, fifty eight thousand? What's it going, thirty six, thirty six thousand? What is it going toward?
Tara's land sale. Sale of that extremely strip.
I'll turn that over to our budget director.
Usually just goes into the general fund as a land sale and. And it it impacts that, and then sometimes they'll come back to council on a later date to. He that request he likes that by someone else, but on default, it just goes to the general fund and goes in fund balance.
Yeah, because since I've been here, we've sold that little sliver over by the railroad tracks and more. North Lake View, right? And then we're selling this little sliver. Do we sell the little sliver down on six hundred south over by the sports park? So maybe that, all that property needs, all that property sales need to be banked into one. So that we can.
Create a land fund.
Yeah.
That certainly would be something that we legislatively could do to say the sale of these properties needs to go into a fund and we could look, use that. To look at purchasing more properties for this kind of housing development. I don't, we haven't discussed that specifically, but that would be a nice way to fund it. We've run into issues in the past where. Well, yeah, different entities have purchased properties and we need to make sure they're made whole, but if we're buying it ourselves for this purpose. Using these funds, I don't know. Brian, do we have any problems with doing that?
With using the funds for them?
Creating a, a. A land purchasing fund, so any of the sales or property that the city already owns. Would go into that fund so that we could then use it. To buy more land that we could probably, I guess, convey to the RDA or put in a land trust so that we could do more workforce. Workforce housing.
I don't see any problem with that. I mean, that's just a matter of where you're. It's really a matter of where you're budgeting your money, right? As you're setting aside and and into a fund to do something of it. As long as you're receiving value for what you do with it.
It it seems like, um, you. It would be helpful, maybe there is in the documents that we get from you and I haven't. Noticed it, but if we have like a line item that says these are all the profits from property sales. Even just having that number is helpful for us, like if, because then if we're contemplating purchasing something. And we think, okay, this is going to require appropriation, that always. You know, makes us hesitate, uh, for good reason, but if we know that, well, over the past five years, the city has actually earned. Um, five hundred thousand dollars of land sales, so and here are the parcels that all got sold and that sort of. Uh, feels like an easier, uh, decision to make knowing that that we had been, uh, putting in and not taking out. But if it requires, uh, if it's preferable to have it actually in an account that we know is designated for that, that's, that's also an option, but. Even just seeing the the numbers on that over the last five years or 10 years would be helpful.
Yep, I would just say that we definitely could, without setting up a fund. Have a mechanism where we just track and provide to the council and then the council decided they wanted to use those funds, then you would just. Know that it's gone into fund balance and then you could go ahead and appropriate. What, we did something recently, you probably remember this, but there was some property that was sold up adjacent to the new Provo temple. And, uh. Public Works actually utilized some of that money for a different purpose, came back to the council, made them aware of it, so that was kind of a unique situation that. Yeah, we would be happy to track or we could work with council staff to track and provide that, but my recommendation would be probably. To do it going forward, but if you want us to go back into review, we'd do that too, but. But that's, that's how we do it, so that's my thoughts.
I think a review would be nice so that we would know if if we're just doing, you know, thirty six thousand dollar transactions here and there. We would know if that's actually going to generate enough money to purchase any properties. Or if we really were serious about purchasing properties that they become available to develop, we would know that we need to budget and put in additional money for that. So that's, that's the only reason it would be nice to have that info.
I think it would be not too difficult, we we could do it for the last couple of years, provide that factor possibly to have to do that.
Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you, John, just to review. So between that and then the other items that we discussed relative to, um. Possible RFQ on Scott Johnson by the end of this month and, um. The body cameras and knowing about the more efficient enforcement of the, uh. Violations is is helpful to them. Perhaps we can do this from time to time, Justin, and kind of see over the course of the year how we're going. Before we move to the other two, employee retention and pedestrian safety, where we have the entire administration here, maybe we could hear. Uh, what discussions you've had relative to these council priorities? And what your reaction is, how you felt about them? How it has informed decisions you're making and what additional priorities you are looking to make for the coming fiscal year.
Maybe I'll take that one. Um, I thought a great example from this last year about. How well that the council team and the council is organized and sequenced the budget process. And I think one of the greatest examples of success is sidewalks and school routes and being able to. Not only have commitments in the budget, but when opportunities happen throughout the budget year for those. Objectives to hold throughout the entire fiscal year and we use those opportunities to expand and do even better on the areas, so. Today, there, Justin and I had a little bit of a discussion about. We didn't know if we were solid with these ones or if there was going to be some revamp after time, but. We got together at a team and maybe have some suggestions on things that. Could help, maybe even additions, um, we completely support, um. As is the sign of a good, solid organization that we support your budget objectives and. And your ownership of the budget process and so. Um, staff will be in a hundred percent to make these objectives happen, but we have a couple ideas of things maybe. Um, that the council could consider also as part of this, so if you don't mind, I'll read a couple of those, all right? One part that. When we do objectives, sometimes there's a lot of great operations and services that go unrecognized in budget priorities and you, we did this. Last year, but a statement saying sustaining citizen valued facilities, programs and services. We have a lot of amazing services that are out there. That maybe don't rise to the priority every year, even though they're very important to all of us. And so making sure that as we develop our budget, that sustaining those. Citizen valued activities is something important to us. Considered every year and. I think this is something important to all of us. We were efficient in government before it became a buzzword. And that's something that Provo has owned, so advancement of government efficiency. And then we put in also along with that, along with managing financial impacts on our citizens. We realize there is still an economy and and there is inflation in this economy and we. Got to try to find the way, keep doing, keep making government more efficient, but keep an eye on how we impact our citizens. We also are working on initiative to support the advancement to gold medal status and active transportation in our community. We have an active committee working with both internal and citizens utilizing, um, the Olympic. Effort and also what they would like to see our community changed to. And be able to add, and I think that kind of fits under pedestrian safety and some of your priorities there.
Right now we're bronze, so our goal is to get gold.
And we're also going for gold as a bike friendly workplace also. So a couple of big initiatives that may need some support through the budget process as we, they, some required improvements, um, have to go through there. Self sustainability of services, I've heard that a lot from the council and hope you know you had me at hello on that one. You know, I think looking at that analysis on what makes sense and all that to make sure self sustainability is a concept we have. All the way through and if that's a possibility, a tale, if everything was self sustainable, then it might not be left for government to do, so there's a little bit of. Analysis that goes into each one of those elements. And then the last one that we had brainstormed on based on what we had here was. Commitment to developing partnerships for funding of community advancement projects. Continuing to not just look to our citizens for funding, but look to other partnerships and other efficiencies to be able to make great things happen in Provo. And that truthfully is Provo's story right now. I think it's a, it's a great story we can all tell together because we're all involved with those processes. So those were the things that we brainstormed. If there's any questions, the mayor can answer all the questions.
Great, very helpful. Thank you, Scott. So, uh, questions or reaction?
So I I really like the idea of sustaining the services that our citizens value. And making those kind of self sustaining things in the future. We've done, you've done, sorry, not me, a fantastic job at bringing in outside funds. Um, federal grants, state level grants, county level and everything. Um, but there's a lot of uncertainty regarding particularly federal funds right now. So how can we make sure that we're sustaining these services? When there is that uncertainty for outside funds, like are we going to get a budget? That. Would sustain these even in the face of not getting anything to help us?
That's a really good question because it was fascinating. Probably about two weeks ago, I know all my directors and myself just started getting this. Inbox full of mayor hold, don't. We're not going to be able to talk about this grant you want to talk about, we're not going to be able to talk about, everything's paused was the term. It was interesting because it made me realize how many people I have asked for money. Because my inbox was full of everything's on pause. Um, we have taken that all into consideration. Our grants and things we usually get are one time funding for a one time project and then we are budgeting to be able to self sustain. So we feel like we're still okay right now. But we are keeping our eye on it. I think everybody's keeping their eye on it. We are, we have concerns with our. RDA, I mean, all these funds that keep us afloat are on pause. So I just tell everyone, stay calm, jump or get stay calm because it's just pause. We'll see what happens and we'll make the best of it, but yeah, we're right there with you. And the funds we're asking for or asked for in the past have been one time. Money so that we can build the airport and we can do these things and then we're budgeting in-house to be able to keep themselves sustainable.
Yeah.
It kind of reminded me of our library, right? I mean, we want to keep our library self sustainable. Eventually get it to where it is just a well oil machine and the programs don't get impacted. That was the piece. I mean, we came up with our four last night, um. The impacts and what it means to the citizens and what it means to us and let's figure out how to still deliver. The the level of quality we've been able to.
Yeah.
But it is a concern.
Yeah, because. You know, it's some of the the one time things we do are things that we probably would have done anyway. Right? And we would have had to budget for those, but because the funds came in, we were able to jump on them and do them faster. And I'm. I'm looking cautiously at what it is that we're, we're hoping to get done. If, yeah, it's just on us, which is good, we should.
A real budget to what we have.
Yeah.
I mean, I have raised a ban on shoestring budget. I know how to go tight. And we're not afraid to. To have those hard conversations and get really surgical with our budgets. We've done it before.
Yeah.
The directors have been great.
So if what we have to do is. Put off a capital improvement project or something in order to maintain the services that we have, that's what we would be proposing?
Absolutely.
Hit the pause button. All right.
Yeah.
Other comments, councillor Handley?
Um, yeah, just a a comment about, um, what Scott was sharing, uh, especially about biking, um. With the T Mac discussions happening, uh, which I think are really exciting. I I don't know yet what the financial implications of going for gold might be, but, um, I don't, I'm. I'm speaking obviously for myself, but I've always thought that. I know last year pedestrian safety was actually. Uh, an envelope that we called active transportation, so it wasn't just, uh, pedestrian safety was also involving. Um, bike infrastructure and and help there. I think. Last year's budget and the new school and so on required a lot of attention on pedestrian safety and we're not done. Um, with with those, uh, projects and needs, but, um, I I'm certainly comfortable. Uh, with administration input on if that, if that's. Your goal, I share that goal, uh, and and would love to see that part of. Our budget priority that includes, um, active transportation in a comprehensive sense.
It's a great committee. I, did we put you on that committee, George?
I'm on the.
Your own team.
Liaison, yeah, to teammate.
But we have formed this committee just. To focus on going for the gold. What are the requirements? Provo City is a bronze right now. So we looked at those requirements, what would it take to get there? How can we start working towards that and? You know, I'm just not patient when it comes to this. I'm like, let's just go for it and see if we can get there in the next few. And they're just like, Mayor, slow, easy. So it is a lot. It's a big lift. But it's so important for the bike walk and, um, we need to be gold. In 10 years, we'll have the, well, nine years, we'll have the Olympics here and we want to be way ahead of that. We don't want them to come in and say. You know, shame on you, you don't have, no, we're going to be like, look what we've done to prepare, we're ready to go. So that's, we're, we're going to get there.
That's great.
Councillor McKay.
Um, my initial reaction to that is, well, personally, look, it's for the winter. I don't know how.
Hey, I bike year round.
You do. But, um, I mean, right now we're asking citizens to pay a lot more in their water and help the infrastructure needs. That really rubs you wrong, that would be prioritizing. The status of gold with something as opposed to getting our infrastructure fixed. I just think it's like. I don't know, that rubs me wrong.
Some of the lists, it's, and we can, we can get the gold requirements. Some of them are are pretty basic and simple to do, like restriping something.
I guess I would need like a dollar amount, but.
And we don't even have that yet, do we, Scott?
Vern is kind of leading up the committee and so we've got a a good chance that we're going down the criteria to get to gold, but you can do that. I have not seen anything and I asked the same question, Catrice, because. Even though George may be looking for more dramatic things to spend more money on in in the budget. I'm the exact opposite. We're trying to, yeah, th- this is going to be a tough budget year. There's no doubt about it, you know, and we used. We used a lot of what I called poker chips last year and there was a great involvement in departments and efficiency and all of that. But these are, since they're early in the process, I don't know if we have those costs, but. Yeah, you know, we're sitting in a building right now that is net zero and all electric and if we would not have had. At least that objective and known that, now there may have been a time somewhere along that, that that would have been. Too expensive and we would have had to talk about that and I felt like running this project that. I had a leader that would have listened to those type of reasons, you know, if there isn't there, so it's a. It's an objective and a thing to go, but I have not seen anything that makes us make that exact choice.
And I think, I think. Some like the low hanging fruit. Let's start the canopy stuff.
Well, everyone is hurting. I think it's a huge deal to ask for any increase in utilities, everything. But also to, you know, there's also just realities where our but our money isn't going, so we're dealing with inflation, just like citizens are dealing with inflation. So I think there's probably a lot of aspirational things that we're not going to be able to tackle.
I don't care. Nine years to do this one in.
Okay.
And the beauty of it is, it's being on the Olympic board is fun. Now, you don't need to, I'm loud. Being on the Olympic board is fun because when they throw money up, I can fight to get it. I mean, every other. I mean, every other venue in the state is running out the Olympic legacy fund except us. We are the only self sufficient venue in the Olympics. So for when the time comes and I need some money to help get us ready. I think the ask is gonna be, I have a good argument, is what I'm saying. To get some money. The hope is, because that's my motto, is not take it out of. I hope we don't have to take it out of the general fund or the taxpayers, heavens no. My hope is I can grab. Some of that legacy fund, because we've already taken care of ourselves for years. They haven't had to send a dime down here. So you might need a dime.
And so is it the case that if we go ahead and make these plans, see what we want to do? Because we have the a plan in place, we would be more or be better candidates for receiving funding?
It's always, it's always that regardless of the ask, the the question is always, are you shovel ready? You know, you hear that term a lot in government. So we would, this committee that we put together, they're working on the plan. So when the time comes, if we need funding of some sort. Mayor is purple shovel ready to put a plan into action? Here's the plan. It is just, we're doing the legwork right now.
Yeah. Yeah, and a lot of things on the the transportation and the bike infrastructure are really. Like upgrades to the existing infrastructure that we have. That makes it safer for all of our road users, right? And reduce traffic conflicts, accidents, things like that. So, yeah, I like the idea of having a good plan.
Yeah, we wanna be ready and we wanna be organized. We kind of have that reputation. With Scott running the venue for years and years that purple, we come to the table ready to go. We don't need a lot of help. Come ready to go.
And so I'm. Of my situation down on five hundred west, where we're gonna open a big Walmart. And I've got an offset intersection that is very, very scary. The road of fifth west narrow significantly and fifteen sixteen fifteen seventeen don't line up. And as my people try to make left turn turns, they nearly get hit because they cannot see. So spending more in bike infrastructure and making this bold and not taking care of some of these. Offset intersections that are safety risks on an arterial road makes me concerned. Because then we're putting more emphasis on bike safety rather than. You guys are dumping more and more and more onto this road and not fixing the problems that are there. So that's, that's my concern.
So that is not what we're doing at all. We are not ignoring what's going on on Lakeview Parkway. It is a priority. We talk about it all the time.
This is five hundred west, not Lake Parkway.
Yes, and feel informed and back there chatting away, because we talk about it all the time. Do you want to speak to it, Gordon? What we're doing with it? Just so she gets that a little bit of information.
Okay, Public Works Director. So Becky and I have talked about this intersection is offset. The city has. Purchased one of the homes on the corner and has put together a design to do a roundabout there. Um, we're now rethinking that maybe these be signals, we're doing a redesign to look at it that might be. About half the cost, you know, how much wideway we need to get to do that. And so. We we're putting together a list of what we call up tier projects and necessarily one, two or three. But some are half million dollar projects, some are millions, some are two million, just different ones that if. We funding or matching comes available or other kinds of funds are freed up. We have one that's designed, ready to go. We know where the wideway is. We can start, just like the mayor said. Um, be ready. So this is one of the projects that we're. Going to know exactly what the wideway is and we'll make a decision between the um, signal versus the roundabout there lead. We're about a month or two before we have that designed and kind of the cost before that's that's ready.
Thanks Gordon. So do we still need to do what we talked about, like have everybody offer a. One project in their district and then have us vote on the top three or you guys have that fired out or?
So, so right now, we're taking our discretionary funds and. As a result of the council's action here, even though you didn't make any action, we saw that your top. Three included sidewalks for schools. We're focusing our money towards um. Other sidewalk projects. There's a few matching projects that we're including in there, including the A twenty north bridge and the um. U dot. Race against a few other things to match, because whenever we do leverage funds, we need that a priority budget. But so in this year's budget, we, you know, we 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 have it allocated, bring it to the council and the council gets it after. You're gonna ultimately say if we pick the right projects or if there's something we've missed that we need to. Go back, but the council can certainly direct that if that's um, the decision. We're trying to follow it. This we think is is pushing us towards.
Is so if we did not get the grant for that match that you were talking about, it would go towards sidewalks? And not necessarily a project.
Right, because right now, I'm gonna take the vote of the council as a whole as to the direction we should go. And of course, I include the administration and they're supportive of the sidewalks and so forth and safety in those aspects. So we're not. We're not crossways on this, but um, if the council has a different priority project, we are not. Here to battle you on that, but we're here to. I know that is clear.
Thank you, thank you, Gordon and Becky. Um, and thank you, Scott Henderson. Great additions to and comments on. Um, focus on our priorities and adding some lots of your own administration's helpful input. So relative then to our third, we'll come back to employee retention, but. Any other comments on active transportation, pedestrian safety? Any other drill down ideas or comments as we further this? Priority, council priority for the coming year.
Chair Garrett, so this, this is essentially very slightly modified language from from last year, so. Uh, prioritizing supplemental grant money to go towards matching funds so that the most. Bang for the buck was used and then additional would be would go towards sidewalks, I think. Scott Henderson made that point, uh, that that was a great. A great example of kind of this overarching direction that the council gave last year. And Gordon is and his team have come back and showed where uh. They've been able to put those dollars that have made huge dividends for for the city. Uh, and so if that is the will of the council, that's, we've kind of left that the same, uh, leaving. Just kind of this discretionary language up or implementation of public works, but. Letting them know that we want them to get the the most for what they can with those dollars and if they can't. Those sidewalk routes.
Well, I think that's great. We did a vote to add active transportation though, and I think we need to prioritize sidewalks and schools.
Okay.
Could we have a vote on that? I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Maybe define that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. We don't have any um, numbers yet from the administration. I um, but I don't know uh, if there. If there are grants that would.
Well, any grants we're gonna do, doesn't matter what they are.
Well, I was gonna say there might be some grants that include um, active transport.
Absolutely, there will be. And we'll put her do those. But we know everything's gonna be tight. Anything that we're putting extra funds on, that's not a grant thing, our priority sidewalks and school. And we need that to be narrow because our money is.
Well, and and I would just add and say, remember the purpose of the discussion is just to set your priorities, right? I mean, as as Scott mentioned before with the tight budget, you might come up with five priorities and none of them might get funded. You're not, you're not really deciding right now what's gonna get funded and what's not. You're telling the administration in what order you want them to put things into the budget to the the degree that they're even able to. So to some degree, you don't really need to know what the proposals are or how much they're gonna cost or any of that stuff. Because the administration doesn't know any of those things and they can't answer the question. You're just trying to give them guidance about what order to fulfill your your policy objectives.
Right.
So I mean.
That's why I view it.
So my 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 point is, if if you if you want, if there's something you want on the list, add it to the list and tell them what order it goes on in the list. You can add ten things to the list if and and that's, you know, one, one thing and ten things is fine, as long as there's an order. Because it's all gonna be about how, you know, the process that they go through to actually start adding things.
So I was seeing um, Catrice's active transport, I was seeing sidewalks and schools really just as a component of active transportation.
No, that adds a whole, you're adding a ton more things in there. So like, if we're having limited money, wanna make our priorities, they need to be condensed. And if we get more money, great, let's go to town. Like, but if we need to think of the very first thing we want that money spent on as a priority and the vote came in is sidewalks and schools.
So that's, that's fine. I'm just in to go ahead and leave it as pedestrian safety. To just be more clear about what where the priority lies and. And since that's what we talked about before. Well, let's move to employee retention then, um, any additional thoughts? Drill down ideas relative to this, Justin?
Yeah, so um. The council spoke about this at a pretty high level back at the meeting in January and really um. What I kind of set this up was to to eliminate whether this was something that the council was looking for. Funding of additional new positions for officers and or firefighters or if this was strictly. Retention of current employees. And if that is the case, um, I've had some conversations with Daniel Softley. And he has some ideas that he will be presenting um, in March. So.
As part of his.
As part of his presentation, yes. So um, I just wasn't sure what. I I think we say employee retention and look at public safety personnel and that. That might mean something different for for different individuals, because I know we've had that conversation about. You know, do we need more officers? Do we need more firefighters? We've also had the conversation of. Um, uh, well, specifically on the firefighter side, we've we've got more firefighters. What is the priority? The planning and anticipated funding when those grant funds go away or is it? Ensuring that we keep the current positions filled that we have with the current employees that we have. In the traditional sense of employer retention, so. Um, so I don't know if there's a desire to drill that down to make it more broad and and vague, which I don't know if. There's, there's a fine balance of of where that becomes helpful for the administration, um, being more detailed or less detailed, but. Um, that's, that was my takeaway from it, but please, this is, these are your priorities.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Justin, Councilor Baldwin.
So I guess at this point, I'd like to hear from the administration on how they view that, because we funded officers. Last couple of years and it is tight and it was tight last year. Is it a better priority to get a couple more officers or to hold off for another year? Or is it a better priority to make sure we retain what we have?
I'll speak, Jeff.
So every time we do this, you know, we meet with the directors and say, tell us what are your budget priorities? We need to hear from you, because we are burned in their day to day lives. On the police, it'll be interesting to see what they bring to me. And if they say, no, I have a hundred and fourteen officers right now, I'm funded for eight more, I'm having a hard time finding those positions. They might come forward and say, we wanna focus more on something else instead of asking for more officers. I don't know, George is probably the only one that was on time. Remember when Chief Ferguson came and said. This is the one year I'm not gonna ask for officers because I need to get, take some money and get everyone right. He did that one year, so we'll just support chief and see what his needs are and he's asked. They're in the middle of a big evaluation, just like every department is right now, so that they can come with their priorities. Scott, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, definitely. A market study is coming down the pipe and that'll tell us exactly where we stand and what commitments we may have to be competitive. And just from talking to Daniel Softly, HR Director, I know there was a discussion with police that, you know. Chief BB talks about, I know I have this many police officers right now that is in the budget. And if I can't recruit that, then making um. Retention and recruiting more solid by moving over and getting um, wages and retention taken care of. Seems to be the short term solution now to solve that. And then you can always come back to the. The increase in force. It seems like one, what it might be a choice, it might be a choice of priorities within a given year.
But we're just talking about police, what about fire? Because there, we can't leave them out. What about fire? Two comments on the fire.
I think council has always been tremendous with public safety and listening to the needs. And as they come forward in their budget reports and what they do, there are some. Grants that they've received that have have have, I guess, bought some time and and purchased and staffing at once. Which we'll have to think about that in the future. I know there have been years in Provo's budget times. I was in this position where we have made major additions to police or fire forces. In the past, and that has just become, just like while we're talking about this year, part of the budget reality. So I think there's. It's all collect and just and even we focus on public, public safety, but there are. There are staffing needs everywhere, you know, so that is something that is a major balancing. We're about ready to bring on major plants and processing and treatment plants and all that. So we've got a lot of these things happening and it is just part of the budget balancing process.
So is it better for us to, in your opinion, to you guys run this? You guys meet with those people often, like Chief BB, Fire Chief and all that. What would your recommendation be to focus on retention or to focus on maybe fire?
Yeah, I think it's definitely working with the department on their feelings. I think Becky, you're. I feel like you're on to the concept that even if you have a hundred and twenty positions, but you cannot fill them. You know, with the compensation that you have, do you really have a hundred and twenty positions to where? I think making sure that we are are right in the market seems to me. And in some of our discussions, public safety seems to be the right solution to get ourselves right in the market.
Okay, so looking at more retention rather than adding additional police. And see, that's, that's how I would feel because it's a tight year, it's been a tight year. They've had to. Sprite to get our retention and and to get the colorates. I just, at some point, we're gonna have to really drill in and look at that. And I really don't, I can't answer for Chief BB and I can't answer for Chief Headman on whether. What their priority would be. And I don't want to go and mandate something that they necessarily can see. Going in different direction would be better for that department. I guess that's where I sit.
Two questions. So if the recommendation from either of those departments is to fund additional positions. Would you bring us a proposed budget that funds those without the need for a property tax increase?
We did it last year.
We funded additional positions to put in that, just the two. Yeah, and the year before we paid for it with the increase. So that's really good. The other one is, do we have a a sense of how many of our F Ts and part time employees? Are funded through grants? So like CBDG, Melissa McNally or our Boca, people who are here just now. Like if if we needed to as a city pay for those positions if grant funds are cut off. Are we looking at that in our budget?
So we we've got those numbers. I've heard Melissa tell me her numbers. I've heard all the different entities bills nodding, because we have, we asked for those numbers. And that's definitely something we can get you, if you would like that report.
Yeah, because they do important work in our community, right? We're partnering. With the the government to kind of be like a pass through, right? To make sure those services are here. I think those services are important. Oh, they're critical. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Does that help, Justin?
Um. A little bit. I I got this highlighted up on the screen, this is um. I guess tie this up in a bow nicely enough of of supporting the recommendations of public safety departments to retraining, recruit employees. Since we haven't heard from them yet, is that?
Yeah.
Um, maybe just um add one thought to that, I mean, my my only caution is that I know most. Department directors don't like to make recommendations where they push the budget uh beyond what is the, you know, the most. Careful uh position, and sometimes in effect, that sort of feels to me like. You know, we're not actually giving them permission to move the needle. I don't pretend to know how how that might work, but I just want him to feel encouraged to ask. Uh for what he needs, and if we have to say no, we have to say no, but if he doesn't wanna ask, then it. Often isn't as helpful to know what, how we can be of greatest service, I mean, I, you know, if you like. Says, this is my dream scenario, this is my realistic scenario, here's my scarcity scenario, that maybe. Might be helpful to us just to get a sense of what he really. Be- because even if we can't do it this year, right, it's it's, what what is the longer term picture looking like? What's that?
Who is he?
I'm talking about Chief BB.
So we're not looking at fire as well?
No, we'll look at.
Well, both, yeah.
Okay, so both they.
Sure.
All public safety, including this, that's part of.
They're both listed.
Yeah, and also, I mean, something that's been really fun, said, look at the directors, they're probably like, that's not fun. But literally, we have been meeting with, we meet all the time, and we started a new program, we started a. Right when Scott came in, because he was tasked with revamping this budget and let's get everyone around the table. All the directors are in the room in January, and they get the monthly reports of where our budget is, how much our. How, I mean, what is it, the sales tax, they get all of that, before they didn't used to, they weren't at the table until kind of the last little bit. They are all, they know every single thing that's going on, and so as they prepare their budgets, their eyes are wide open. Because they can see where we're at, what's going on in the market, what's going on with sales tax, all of those things. So they're, they're much more informed and prepared to make smart decisions on their own budgets. And again, we support their budgets, they come and we just say, tell us, show us your budget, how are you doing? Where do you need help?
Very good, thank you, Mayor. All right. Good, Justin, we'll plan to um review this again in another month or two and kind of see wh- where we are with some of these. Um, goals and priorities.
Or just one quick question, um to the home, the housing and the occupancy piece, would you like something added? There was some discussion around review of certain local property and potentially putting that into a fund. Is that something you'd like added to this, this brand? It sounded like there was some general consensus, but. I don't want to take anything.
John did agree to do a review of the last two years. To collect data, to see kind of what we're looking at there relative to property that's been sold, that can be a starting point.
Now, do we even need to come back, or are we done?
Well, we, um, I would just be interested in seeing and making sure that we're meeting. Our goals that we've set today relative to the RFQ for um. The so the software, once we hear from the department heads. It's just to touch bases, I think.
I could do that, but are, do you feel that these are, these are the council's priorities? I think that's, the council in case get mad. I think. We lost, but I think uh. A vote in that sense would be be helpful to give the the administration. Um, some direction and kind of formally pass these on, as we've done in the past, but we'll bring them back for.
Okay.
If everyone feels strongly.
Okay, sure, we can call for a vote relative to this updated. Of edited list of priorities for the council. So we'll call for a vote, I'm starting with Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Is he? Oh, guess not.
Okay.
Did you hear my vote?
You did, thank you. So.
Just for the point of clarification, why don't you like that report that Rachel watched? Of all the boys that are from two grand.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And when are we gonna get the report from John? Do we need to set a date for us?
Um.
I think you do it at the same time, friend.
Okay, at the same time.
So it's been two weeks?
Yeah.
Are you okay with two weeks? Is that too soon?
Yes.
Okay. And Counselor Whipple has added her vote as well, so that passes six to zero. Yes, all right, we'll move to the next item then, which is the discussion, yes.
Real, real quick question, so is that a request for the administration to come back to the work meeting for that, or is this just a? Pass along, be emailing out to the council?
Yeah, I think we just need to come back to us. We've done our bit.
Yep, just to email.
Well, well, my one question would be. If John comes back with something favorable, we probably wanna add to the motion of creating some kind of fund for land use. So, I don't know, I think I prefer. To have John come to a work meeting so that we can make a motion in that, rather than just getting an email. But as far as the mayor goes, I think that's just good information to have.
Okay, so that could be part of your next.
Is that true? That was your.
Thank you. All right, the next item is our discussion related to an ordinance. Amending water fees on the Provo City Consolidated Fee Schedule. We're going to start with Gordon Haight.
All right, thank you.
Gordon, did you accept their opportunity to be on the radio this morning?
I did, so.
How did that go?
It, yeah, I.
You, you loved every minute of it?
I love every minute of it, yeah, we have people that are much more clever and should, it would sound better, it should be on the radio than me, but anyway, it was great. Um, no, there's, I appreciate being able to be here, and there's been a lot of discussion about the water rates and what we're doing tonight. So I kind of just wanted to outline what we're doing and um just kind of make our position clear, so. Everybody can kind of think through this really well, so tonight, there's two separate things we're looking at, one is tiered rates, and that, that. Doesn't have to have anything to do with the increase, that is revenue gen- gen neutral, revenue neutral. It just has to do with how we build customers, and. The advantage that we tried to point out with that is that it um. Provides a little more equity, because not every gallon of water costs the same, and in the summer. Water rate, water costs more than it does in the winter, and so when we go into peak demand, that water's far more expensive. In the summer, and so doing a tier allows some equity, it's, it um. It's, we, we don't have to change it, we can continue as we're doing today, and or we can adjust it, so it's not a. Mandate, I know that most communities, if not all the communities in the state, have tiered. Tiered, I hear that all have had it, but us, but I I gotta believe out of two hundred and seventeen communities or whatever there are, there's probably some out there that don't, but. Um, the ones I'm familiar with all have tiered um for this reason. The, there's a discussion around tiered um about conservation, it, it allows people. Often to look at their bill a little more um critically, and how their water use, so that, that is a side effect, but it is. Primary reason that we do this, it's mostly for the equity and providing for. Um, more uniform cock price across the horse. Um, the second thing we're gonna talk about tonight is a rate, and there's been a lot of discussion on the rate. And so I wanna start off by just saying, um, we adopted a master plan that I believe is correct, it tells us the things we need to do in the city. To make us function and to accomplish all the things we need to, and then it's up to us to figure out a mechanism to pay for it. And there are a lot of different things that we can consider to make that happen, and so last year, one of the things I had mentioned to you is that we can look. At some other options to pay for the improvements other than a water rate, and. This may be a time that it would be worthwhile to um pause, to look at some of these other options. Um, and and that'd be the recommendation I would give you, is let's try some things, we're gonna talk about some things later today. But it may be an option to give us a chance to look at other things other than just a water rate. So tonight, you can vote on one or both of these things, but end the day, it's the council's decision what, what a rate is or what it should be, or if we tier it. Um, they have pros and cons, we do the tiering, some people are gonna experience a fairly significant increase because of their water use through the summer. Um, and 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 those things get compounded and when you look at the rate. So what I wanted to do today is, one of the things that needed to happen was, we are showing how the tiering works with. Um, with our water rate, and so Keith is going to go through. The, the tiering that you didn't see last week, the tables, how, how that works. And answer any questions associated with either the rate or the tier, or any of those things you may have, and um. While answering your questions, so, yes.
Um, just in preparation for this, can I ask an overarching question? Um. In my head, I, I, for some reason, I thought that we hadn't raised water rates in a long time, but I got your list of where we have raised them. So I don't recall voting on those raises, so is there a certain percentage you can just raise? Without a vote, or how does that work?
I think, no, you have to vote on everything we do, whether, um, I'm not as familiar with those earlier raises, but um.
Well, like last year, the five percent, five percent, like.
So two thousand and four, we did put it in.
There's been a couple times before where we've done the thing where we passed several rates, several increases all at the same time.
Like with the wet storm water, like the.
Right, like we passed a table where it's gonna go up every year, but it's one vote.
Okay, okay, so that was, that was my second part of my question, so I thought that we couldn't vote for like a ten year plan. Without going to the council every year, but.
No, you, you can, you can put it into the code, it's just that they could, that a future council could change it at any.
Okay, so those could have been put in earlier and, okay, all right, that answers my question, thank you.
John, did you have a comment you wanted to?
I was, I I don't want to answer your question, but what we've typically done over the years is that part of the budget process, and so. Those rate increases you look at that were done previously were submitted as part of the budget process, and the council approved those rate increases.
So to be clear, Gordon, if the council voted to um. Support the tiers, the tiered structure, but not um a rate increase. The tiered structure would apply to the current rates, okay.
And there'd be no new revenue in the system, it'd be neutral, in terms of that, the funding the city got, yes. Um. Yeah, that's correct, and 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 so tonight, you can make, you could just approve the tier or. Or the um rate or both, whatever you want.
Counselor.
So, if we just approve the tiers, the three tiers, how does that look? Because right now, we're just on a winter and a summer. And so I, I would be curious on what those levels would be and what that. What that impact would be before I could vote on that, I'd have to see it.
So, so the, the tier system can be a lot of different ways, and so we had Keith and his group look at what we think. Would be the best locations to put the first tier and the second tier, you know, all three of the tiers.
Which we've seen.
And the base rate, and so. Um, that could be adjusted, but he can explain the methodology and why he picked those rates, and a lot of it had to do with. Trying to capture only the top ten percent heaviest users, and it's, it was meant to try to, again, look at equity, and there's multiple ways we can do this. So if there's certain objectives, they're intended by the council, we can create a tier that will accomplish that. I don't know if that answered your question.
How would you say change tiers though would be revenue neutral?
The, the city wouldn't get any additional funds, the city, so when John looks, so if we just adopted the tier system under the current rate. John would look at the water budget and see that it hadn't gone up one penny, it would be the same, because the way customer service would. Would arrange the tiers is this, is that. People would actually have a decrease in costs, other people would have an increase, and uh the city would receive the same amount of money.
I think that's probably, we do.
That would be removing a tiered structure without a rate increase.
That, that's if you adopt it without a tier, so.
Without a rate.
Excuse me, without a rate, is that the city would have no new funding, it would stay just as it is today. Um, this year's would be the same amount of funding we'd get next year, it's just that certain individuals that had. That the crease, they went over the tiers, have an increased cost, and those that were below that would have a lower cost.
And I can actually tell you what those rates would be, they're not, they're not very hard, you would just take the recommended tiers. For twenty twenty five, and you would divide them by one point one two, it's just removing the twelve percent increase. So there's nothing magic about that, we, we found the right ratio, and then we increased it with the rate increase by that twelve percent.
And see, I wouldn't feel comfortable on voting like something like that before we got it out to the public and let them get it.
So, so, so the thought would be is let's have um Keith show you this, go through the, the tiering, those comments, and then we'll answer.
Sounds good, thank you, Gordon.
Yeah, and really, again, the presentation that's in your packet is exactly the same as we looked at before. Uh, there was one thing that I actually probably should have fixed from last time before, um. Which was just the confusion on that table about winter, summer versus tiers. We get to do this again, hopefully I'll fix that one next time.
That confused me when I was doing calculations before we got our calculator, that's where my.
Yeah. And hopefully the calculator has been helpful for answering some questions. Um, if, let's see, do I have control of this? Okay, you do. Oh, there we go, okay, uh, we, we've talked about all this, this is where I should have made this a little clearer, I apologize for that. Um, okay, this is what you have not seen. So there was a question that came up, uh, which was how, how do we, we, we've tried to keep this simple, and so what. Everything we've shown you thus far has been for residential rates. For your three quarter inch uh water meters, that applies to uh. Nearly eighty percent of your uh residential connections, that's seventy seven percent or something, right, in that range. So the question became is, okay, how do we apply this to other situations other than that? That, that those, those three quarter inch residential meters, so the first thing I wanna talk about is residential. Uh, so there are some concerns, uh, specifically, uh, one of them was about lot size. What do you do when somebody has a larger lot size than uh another person? They can't conserve as much, they have to maintain that. That grass space, uh, et cetera, so there's a couple of things that we can do, uh, one is that we could structure these tiers. Uh, based on actual lot size, and you could create bins of lot size that identify different, different tiers. The other more common way to do it, because it is much easier to implement. Um, and also provides some equity, uh, is to group people by their meter size. And the reason that this works pretty well is because, uh, normally, the larger the lot you have. The larger your meter, and that also applies to uh multifamily type connections, so when we have an apartment with a hundred units. They will have a larger meter size. So what we did was, we went and we looked at the data uh of your historic water use. And we looked by residential meter size, and then we identified uh percentages so that. By meter size, you would be paying the same amount on a percentage basis in tier one. Tier two and tier three, so for example, in three quarter inch, uh, about ten percent are larger than fifty five. Thousand gallons, uh, on a one inch, about ten percent or above one hundred. Inch and a half, about ten percent or above two hundred and fifty uh thousand gallons, and so on and so forth. Does that kind of make sense, how, how those were created? So, uh, this is created so that the cost burden is divided fairly amongst these various meter sizes. Now, um, there is some fluctuation within each meter size. There are very. There are very small three quarter inch lots and there are larger three quarter inch lots. Um, grouping them together is a necessary simplification to make. A a water rate uh at uh administrable, is that a word? To be able to administer it. And so um, could there be additional breakdowns here? There, sure there could. Uh, this though is the most common and maintains uh a reasonable level of fairness between the different meter sizes. Okay.
So do we currently have that residential tier volume break going on?
Uh, no, you don't, because you have just a seasonal rate and you you're not, you're not. Uh, going by size, it's just that winter, summer. You do have base rates that are based on meter size, so your base rates do vary by meter size, but this does not exist today.
So you said that's pretty common, you do several cities, not just Provo. Is this generally where their tiers break out is ten, fifty-five or fifteen, a hundred?
Are those specific?
Levels, yeah, that like maybe Sandy would have, if you did Sandy, or would Sandy look a little bit different with their?
Every city is a little bit different, um, because every city. Has a little bit different water use patterns and every city has slightly different goals. Um, I will tell you, most cities that have uh incorporated uh increasing block rates. Actually have four blocks or four tiers, uh not three. Um, the kind of ideal recommendation is somewhere between three to three to five, three to six maybe. Uh, beyond that, it gets too complicated, less than that, it's hard to make any kind of differentiation. So I would, I would guess that um probably eighty percent have four tiers. Ten percent have more than four and ten percent have less than four.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll I'll just show the other thing, uh, you'll note that the tier costs are the same regardless of what the meter size is. And again, that's uh trying to capture cost of service and the amplification associated with peak demands. Yeah.
Um, cause there seems to be uh a lot of uh. Lot sort of lack of clarity on why the tier system is uh more equitable or if it's more equitable. Can you either explain now or and tonight as to? Why what we currently have is not as equitable, if that's your argument, can you explain that? Meaning, you know, cause the 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 average person and myself included, you first think about it, you think, well, gallon is a gallon. So why should a gallon cost more? Uh, why should you have differentiations at all in terms of gallon? But so that cost right there, can you just explain why that cost is higher for the higher tier?
Sure, so. Um, what we're looking at is demand on the system. And demand does not hit the system uh equally throughout the year. So specifically, um, if we had a system that was designed to deliver water constantly. We would be delivering, uh, somebody help me up, about fifteen million gallons a day or something like that. Ten million, okay, we'd be delivering ten million gallons a day. However, because of the way that we use water, uh, in the summertime, we don't use that ten million. We use fifty million gallons a day uh during the summertime. So what that means is that we have to put in a lot more infrastructure to meet those peak demands that occur. So specifically, we have to make our pipes bigger, because we need to get the water through faster during that time period. We need to build additional storage, because we're seeing larger fluctuations throughout the day that that storage needs to fill and drain. And we also use more expensive water sources during that period. We could just use, uh, you know, at a flat rate, we just use our most cost effective water sources. Um, but we can't do that in the summer, we have to bring them all online and we spend a lot of money on power for wells and other things. Um, so all of those result in additional cost for the city. So behind these numbers, we have done an analysis of what it costs to serve water at basically a constant rate. And what it costs to serve water at these higher peaking rates. And so that's what's embedded into those higher tiers is capturing the actual cost of providing. That uh additional service. That's in a nutshell, we could go into it further, but. Follow up questions or additional thoughts?
I guess um without the tiers, then you have a situation where the lower users. As you had explained it to me, uh, just wanna make sure I understand it correctly, that the lower users are. Without the tiers, the lower users end up subsidizing the cost of the system that is incurred by the higher users.
You you, correct.
Okay, so and we've been doing that. I mean, we have the two tier system right now, but I don't, I don't even understand how our system. As a winter, summer tier system, it meets the requirements of the state. The state law, because it doesn't seem like it does with the state law um is intended to do.
You you do have a small increase at one hundred thousand gallons on both your winter and summer rate. There's a little small increase, so it does meet the letter of the law. Uh, I will note that the legislature right now is working on legislation to strengthen the language associated with. Tier grades, so I don't know what will happen with that, with that language, but. Uh, right now, you meet the letter of the law, but certainly not the spirit of the law. Uh, as intended to to capture tier grades.
This tier right here would. Satisfy the legislature from whatever they're coming up with this session?
It it's hard to know without knowing what's gonna come out of the legislature, uh, but. This definitely meets the current statute and the intent of the current statute.
So if we have to revisit this again, are we putting the cart before the horse?
We have to revisit again, do we what?
If the legislature revamps how they're doing this tier system. And we adopt it now and we're gonna have to adopt something completely different in two months from now, are we putting the cart before the horse even adopting?
I I wouldn't guess so, my guess is that this is gonna be just fine. Um, but you, that is a possibility. Assuming the legislation passes.
I I mean, again, without knowing that, it's hard to apply without knowing the details, so it's a good question. More likely scenario is that if you reject this now. And the bill passes. In a couple of months, we'll be back saying you have to do it. But there's, I I don't think there's a lot of risk that if you do this, that then then you're gonna have to do something different, but. You don't know without knowing.
Meaning this is the general direction the state is moving.
Yeah, and I will add, what the state seems to be primarily targeting. Is uh implementing these type rates for secondary water systems who have traditionally not. Uh, not all of them have had this type of 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 system. And if that's the case, the current, the uh, it's just up uh. Uh, at the legislature on Monday, the current proposal is implementation by twenty twenty-seven. Uh, so it's not an immediate thing, but that was, again, was focused primarily on secondary.
My comment is, is this has been such a hard debate.
Yes.
But if we have to come back and bring something stricter to the public, I would much rather just sit it off and wait until something stricter happens. But if this is gonna satisfy that requirement. Then, you know what I mean?
Well, I, so if I am a betting man, uh, which I'm not really, but if I were. Uh, I do think that uh what the legislature is doing would affect this at all. I think there's a less than one percent chance that this is affected. If we were talking secondary, that that's a much different thing, but. I don't wanna over. Over push that issue, I just wanna make sure we were clear on. Compliance. Okay, uh, I'm just going to mention the other thing here, which, let's see. Okay, uh, we do the same thing for non-residential. And um your non-residential includes your institutional, your industrial and your commercial. Uh, type accounts. Um. This is the exact same system, it's using the exact same meter sizes. Uh, but you will notice a difference in the uh allowance. And you might at first glance say, wait, how is that fair? There's a difference allowance, but again, this is based on a statistical analysis to be able to capture. The effect of peaking uh that occurred uh by each of these different user types. And so in general, commercial users tend to use a larger portion of their actual meter. Uh, capacity, and so that is reflected in these numbers here. Um, but it's still basically the exact same concept on the non-residential side.
So non-residential doesn't have a three quarter connection or it's included in the one?
Uh, yeah, uh, correct, so um. We have set a minimum size of one inch envelope on commercial uh for that reason. Okay, these are really the only two pieces of information that I uh have developed since we last spoke. Um. And. Yeah, it did, it did involve a fair amount of just statistical analysis using the tiers that we had set up. If we wanted to make changes, it is possible to change, but that's why we made the decision before was to try to own in on this.
So the rates per thousand gallons are the same.
The exact same on commercial and.
That's different.
Yeah, just the the rate per tier, it's just the tier breakpoints are slightly different.
And so I I just wanna bring this up, because there's been some discussion about getting rid of tier three, and I brought this up in the public works meeting that we had. So if we got rid of tier three completely, what does that do to tier two? How much does that bring up the price? I'm looking at the tier volume costs.
So uh, we did a little analysis of what that would require. And Jimmy can tell me the numbers, but I believe. The dollar forty-six in tier one would have to go up to a dollar sixty-one, sixty-four. And then tier two would split the difference here, so you have that number?
Three dollars and fourteen.
Three dollars and fourteen cents. And because of that, we would also have to move the tier break, and so we would charge tier one, uh, let's go back to. Uh, residential. Instead of being a ten, it would divide at twenty-five thousand gallons, so you'd have. A dollar sixty-four below twenty-five thousand and uh, sorry, now I've forgotten it, three.
Fourteen.
Three fourteen above twenty-five thousand. So that would actually be more expensive for nearly all your residents. It would be less expensive for your largest water users. So the, basically those ten percent that are in the tier three, they would see a drop in. Their bill if you were to go to two, cause you're basically shifting more of that cost to the.
So basically everyone else would be paying for the higher.
That's right.
The higher tier users.
That's right.
Do we know what percentage of users we have at tier two?
In tier three?
Into tier two.
Uh. I don't know the answer to that, I'll just confess. It it it, most of your users are going to get into tier two at some point. Um, because uh, most of them have some outdoor use.
Okay, so like during the summer.
Yeah, yeah, for me, I'm I'm tier one for what, like four? Five months of the year and the other months I'm in tier two, because there's, there's more watering. Um. Yeah. There's plenty of people that are tier one, to tier two all the time.
Counselor, have you done any, uh, there there has been some talk about the. Uh, concern about the rates, um, as they're suggested. The rollout of them over the course of the next few years. Um, and I keep wanting to know what the cost would be if we adjusted any of those rates. Uh, I think I asked you this question earlier, but like if. If we said, well, the twelve percent jump in that first year is is a lot to ask people to do in one year. Um, so I mean, I'm curious to know if you've done any analyses of what. The recommended rate increase, i- if you were to adjust those recommended rate increases. To be lower or extended out over longer periods of time, what that does. I I mean, I'm.
Yeah.
I think you, I I asked you this question, so I know more or less what you you're gonna say, but I think it'd be helpful for. Uh, um, the public to hear that explanation, because it's gonna be. If if this is gonna be what we're asking our citizens to do, it's important that they understand. Why that's, this is um, what financial sense this makes as opposed to something uh that could be offered as an alternative, so.
Sure.
Have, have you run any of that, uh, any of that, any of those numbers to get a sense of the anticipated cost?
Yes, so um. I will continue to advocate for the importance of getting your funding level up to this sustainable. Level uh over time. That to me is essential, if you are not at that level in the long run. Then uh you will, your system will be slowly falling apart and you you will. You will be in trouble, so that's, that's my strong recommendation to you. So the question then becomes is, well, do we have to get there over ten years, you know, could we, uh, could we go just a little flatter over time? How could we do that? So any changes to this schedule is basically going to shave into this pink uh up at the top or salmon color. Which is your rehabilitation and replacement. So we talked about this probably a year ago, but I'm gonna reemphasize it. There is a difference between proactive replacement and reactive replacement. When we're proactive, we can uh schedule when to do the construction, uh, we can get uh. Lowest cost bids, um, we can coordinate with our residents to make it easier for them. When we do reactive, we often are in emergency mode and we have to. It just do whatever it takes to get water back in service. So uh, uh, our analysis of the cost of reactive versus proactive. On a number of national databases is that it costs about sixty percent more. To do reactive maintenance uh versus proactive maintenance. So what does that mean? That means for every dollar we shave off of the pink now. Unless we can catch up at some point, we are going to have to pay a dollar and sixty cents to do that same work later. Um, so I. You're, you have to make tough decisions, I don't envy your position, because the these are hard questions uh to answer. But I would emphasize that you don't get to choose whether you're going to spend the money. The system will require you to spend the money. You get to choose whether you spend a dollar now or you spend a dollar sixty at some point in the future. And so that's where I would continually ad, continue to advocate for uh making that uh transition. Uh, as fast as can sustainably be done uh to help your uh residents have lower costs in the long run.
I just wanna add something, I.
Yeah.
The one that we had last year horrifies me, where the road was crumbling as the car was driving, right? I never wanna see a child riding a bicycle falling into a trench into one of our roads or a car. Heaven forbid, like what happened, and it'd be worse that someone gets hurt or maimed or dead. That would. I think we get a lot more pushback from something like that, so. That kind of thing horrifies me and it's something that's we're already seeing.
Yeah. I, and I I don't wanna be a doomsayer here, uh, but if we continue to fund the system. Below where it needs to be, we will have more of that over time.
Yeah, for my office, um, there was a water break, I think, associated with the temple maybe. So there were two, two or three days last year that we did have water in our our building. And then another one just a couple of weeks ago when they were coming back and finishing it up. It's incredibly disruptive to.
It's incredibly disruptive to have a day where you get in the office, you're like, oh. We have no toilets today, let's see how well we work and. You know, go to Zupas to have to go to the restroom, right? It's incredibly disruptive. Um, I'm looking at this like by analogy to my own house, so I have a super old house. Very old pipes. And more than a dozen years ago, we got told by our plumber that we would need to replace our sewer line going out because of. Structural issues and age issues, and it would be several tens of thousands of dollars to do this. And we're like, oh, we cannot do that right now, that is too much for our budget. He's like, well, you, you can wait, but you can't wait forever. And so we waited and then we got to the point where we would have to have the plumber come and like snake it every year so that we could keep. Having water flowing out. And then we had to like have him come twice a year. And last year we had to have him come three times and he's like. You cannot keep doing this, it is, it is time. And all of that money that we, we spent over these years snaking, like we were buying time, but we were not fixing the underlying problem. We were not fixing the pipes so that we had sustainable pipes going into the future. And I think that's kind of what we're looking at here, right? Like we can continue to, to do the patches, but the patches are gonna get more expensive. If we don't actually pay to do this planned rehabilitation of the system. We're going to have more disruptive service, we're going to be paying more for that disruptive service. Um, and we're not ever going to get to the point where we're in that, that happy blue zone.
Counselor Henry.
Yeah, just another local example in my street, uh, uh, we had one of the worst. Um, pavement problems on our street in the city for a long time, and I was. Always hoping someday it would get repaved and it finally was, and then a water main broke and they had to rip it up three times to fix it. Um, you might remember this, and, and the street, and the street is now sort of. Wobbly, I mean, it's gotten this weird warp in it all the way down the hill and I just. I don't know, I just think about how much money we spent to get it repaved and then we had to dig it up several times, so um. And it's now uh well on its way to needing to be repaved someday uh because of that, so I, I do think the. That dollar sixty uh feels very real to me in terms of what I've experienced on my own street.
Right, I was just gonna add for, you know, for completion of the picture too, that that dollar sixty is about. The cost of fixing the pipe, but usually when pipes break. They ju, they do other things than just break the pipe, they flood basements, they collapse roads, so they have traffic accidents, things like that are. Our standard on those kinds of things is that. If there's a system failure that, that causes damage to somebody else's property and we had. We didn't know that it was going, was coming and we had no reason to know it was coming, then we deny the claim. But if we did know that the failure was imminent or had reason to know that it was imminent, then we end up paying the claim, so there's legal liability. For the damage arising out of failure, system failures as well.
You mean this map that we had that shows all of the pipes that are more than fifty or a hundred years old?
I wasn't gonna point that out to the public, but sure. Yes, so I mean, that's the, you know, that's the thing is the studies we do to evaluate the status of our system, those are. Evidence of what we know.
Well, if there are no additional questions for Keith, maybe we could have. Um, Gordon, it sounds like you had more to present, Gordon, that you wanted to share with us as part of this discussion. Relative to the, um, was that just for tonight?
Oh. Um, so I think, I think Keith's right, and I think the questions that they brought up are very important that. We are not, I'm not advocating the idea of not replacing these pipes, I think. The plan, the mass plan that we've adopted indicates that those have to be replaced. The, the idea is, I think. The recommendation I'm making is that there's other funding sources we have not been able to develop at this point, and we. Are processing through some things that might impact. The amount that we need to have or when we need to do this, so that's, that's the only reason I bring that up, so the pipes. Still need to be replaced, they need to get better just cuz I said so, but. There's a timing that, that we're looking at to get it a number together.
I've had citizens advocate for revenue bonds or a bonding mechanism instead. To get our, our infrastructure where it needs to be, because their whole thing is, you know, you would keep upping these rates, they never go back down. What's your opinion on that?
I, I'm not a big advocate for bonding for maintenance, I'm, I, I don't mind bonding for a capital project for new infrastructure, but old. It seems to me that you'd want to do it with a. Regular income, so a smart part of your.
The idea that it is perpetual, so.
Yeah, I would say that, that's how I would recommend, and I, so I'm not, I don't believe anybody's looking at any kind of bonding at this point, I don't think that would be. Something we would do, that, that'd be something I wouldn't recommend.
Counselor.
So Gordon. Are there any, I, I know. I know the grant money is a threat at this point, but is there any other funding sources that we can get to do this besides? The residents, I know that was one of the administration. Big thing is try to seek other funding besides resident money, is there any other way to do it?
We're looking for another COVID outbreak monster.
Yeah.
Too soon, Gordon, too soon, yeah.
Certainly, Gordon.
When is the statute?
PTSD for all of us.
Okay, sorry, um. I think. I think the city has some resources that we need to consider and look at, I, I suspect. I, I'm not. If there are state or federal resources that open up for replacement of pipe. I think we will be aggressive, and I think there's reasons the state is, is maybe charging down a, a bad path. Um, they're spending money. It, I'm familiar again with Salt Lake City and um. And in holiday, they were doing fifty percent of their water was leaking. Was, they were paying for the water, just leaking through pipes. And the issue is, if you really wanna conserve water in the state and fifty percent of your water is going in the groundwater and you're spending. So many dollars going in a certain direction, there are reasons the state ought to be rethinking. How they are allocating, and we're talking about already green or already a clean water that, you know. Drinkable, and this is happening up and down the Wasatch Front, so there are full other ways to address this than what I see. Um, government agencies thinking about that probably ought to be in the midst of what they're doing, so. So I, I'm not counting on federal or state grants, I, I think our smartest people end up just getting stuck in city councils and mayors and don't. Go and graduate onto state legislator and federal legislature, may, maybe that's wrong. That was probably meant to be a compliment, it turned out. Um, but there's a practicality and there are some things we'll be talking about later and. Maybe have some bearing on what we're talking about here.
And the other thing, and I, I don't mean any criticism or anything to the administration. It's just been thrown out there several, several times, and I do realize going over your budget, you guys are very frugal. And you guys are pinching pennies, but um. It always comes back to us as council members, and so I just kinda want those in a public meeting. Why can't you cut something else? Why can't we use general fund dollars to pay for this? And like I said, I don't mean it to be critical, but can you guys address, address that about efficiencies and?
Sure, all options are on the table, I think what we've been able to do is I've set up a capital improvement program. Within water rates that also covers a lot of the capital needs of our system. I think um, looking at alternate revenues, uh, when we look at this plan, this is based only on rates. And I think if you were just talking, the water department could, because as water revenues come in. First dollars out are, are operation budget for water. So, can you look at that and try to create capital from efficiency and savings in that? Or do you look at other possible water revenues that, that could come in to be in play, whether it's. Um. Leasing water rights as a possible revenue to fund capital and do these, I mean, the, there's a lot of things that we can do. Now definitely you can go to the, the general fund, we have a utility rate that has created a capital account. And you'll probably be going over their capital improvement program really soon here. You know, to go over what is spent in that capital, we just approved debt for a water treatment plan. Out of that same capital fund, so there are, there are resources there, so there's a lot of different things. Um, Councilman Bogdan, that we can look at, and you know, from, from our standpoint, I think we support. Our Public Works Director in saying there's just some things that we think we can try to get to these answers and. Going to the citizens is something that the administration feels that we should be compelled to do after looking at all these.
Okay, so basically, if I summarize it, that's something that you guys are doing. Right now, so before these recommendations, or that's something that you're committed to do?
Well, I think it's something we will always do, you know, so it's, it is an analysis that we are going on, but we do understand. That setting rates is a council function, and so obviously. Whatever happens as part of the decision made today would dictate some of our actions and what we do.
Thank you.
Counselor Henry.
Counselor Bogdan's question uh makes me think about that, I mean, we've had this discussion on and off for a while, you know, about. Making sure we're paying for what we're actually getting, and I think one of the. One of the hesitancies that I have about placing the burden of these costs anywhere else but on the rates is that. We're talking about water use and it's, that seems to me that a system that keeps evading. The actual cost that, that consumers are putting on the system, it, it, in the long term. Uh, is not a healthy uh structure, right? Because then you have sort of. Um, you, you've separated cost from use um and, and created an illusion that the water that you're getting isn't. You know, isn't costing a certain amount of money to the city, so that's why, that's. One of my responses to that question that I've had is to say, well, we're, we're trying to figure out what the. Um, most accurate and fair way to uh price the actual cost of the actual use um. And I was, I was impressed that the taxpayer, Utah Taxpayers Association and a lot of the. Conservative think tanks in Utah really feel very strongly about um making sure that water rates reflect use and, and. Uh, uh, not just because that might help with water conservation, but because. A, a, a more uh equitably distributed cost of water use actually. Um, when it drives down water consumption, that helps uh the taxpayer in the long term. Um, and you know, that, that, anyway, that just seems like a fundamental concept in, in a lot of conservative economic thinking is that you always want. You always want the price to reflect the use and not um have it attached to something else, so that, that's anyway.
I think that's a good point, it is a commodity, it's something that the residents are purchasing from the city. It's not necessarily a tax, and I think that's where a lot of people get the confusion. Is that it's commodity, just like the former Quest Star, you would buy your, your gas from there. A commodity, like if you're gonna put gasoline in your car. Um, it's a commodity that everybody needs to survive, and I think that was helpful for me when. Public Works pointed out that that first tier is what they call essential water, which is water that you need to survive. And that is what you could say is subsidized because it's the lowest rate. That we are offering versus the tier two, which is what the normal person uses to water their outside, whether that's a garden, whether that's a lawn, whether that's flowers. Whether that's your kids running through the sprinklers, whatever that is, and then the higher tier is the anomaly.
Yeah, cuz if all of our use all year were in that tier one, the whole system would be much less expensive.
Right.
Right, the cost of water would be less and we could all just be paying that lower rate. But because our use in the summer is what, five times what it is in the winter. We, we've gotta be able to, to pay for a system that's five times as big as what our winter use is. Um, I, George brought in other groups, so I did get a message from Lee Sands with Libertas, and he says that. First, they support making cuts to non-essential services to prevent a rate increase, but if non-essential services cannot be cut. We support a tiered user fee for water usage. And that they would oppose creating a utility fee or increasing property taxes for, for such a thing. And it, it really goes back to what George is saying, is that we are actually paying for the commodity, for the thing that we're using.
Now, to be clear, and as a reminder, Gordon, the current water revenue. Provides for nine million dollars per year in maintenance. So am I remembering that?
Capital, capital, so part of that's going for.
Going capital.
Yeah, some of it's going for replacements of pipes, and some are, we're, we're preparing some of the other areas like the.
New developments.
Yeah, and so we gave enough, a quite a bit of money to UDOT to replace all the pipes in their south, those were old red pipes, but. We had used that to replace those, um. So, so we're using that as capital, there's about nine million dollars for capital replacement. So we're trying to do that, use as much of that in replacements we can.
Hmm, okay.
Um, so, eh, eh, all these excellent questions, and I guess the thought is, night, the intent is to have um. Keith, go through the presentation, cuz a lot of the public hasn't seen this. Answer any of the questions you have, and so today, right now, we have time to go through anything else to make sure we're. Clear in what we're getting out or what message needs to be, or what um information you think could be, be valuable.
Well, I appreciate Keith's willingness tonight to present, that really can be part of our public information. Effort, cuz I think that's mostly what we've been hearing over the last two weeks, including as we speak while we're. While emails continue to come in, um, we, we didn't know, we didn't hear, educate us more. I think that's the big frustration that residents have, and so in that vacuum. Media has stepped forward and is supposedly providing the information to the residents.
Yes, information's challenging.
And that, I, I was going to ask about that, it sounds to me like you'd like me to take a. Healthy amount of time this evening to walk through, provide the background. It will be a little bit tough to summarize everything we've done over the last two years, uh, but. But we'll, we'll spend a little bit of time.
Well, and also the businesses, the business district, they've asked, because you know, this is new information, those business rates, right? They've also asked that they have some time to study that, is that something very that you're willing to come up with a calculator for?
Do that.
If you're willing. I don't, I don't think one is really. I, I think, I think he'd probably appreciate it, I haven't asked him if that's what he'd want, but I, I think he'd appreciate it, and I think if he's going to businesses, we might. Be getting more questions, so that might be helpful. If you're willing.
You just love the reservations.
The business rates. Cuz I know that's one thing he wanted to do, and that wasn't my suggestion. Said Becky, I'd wanna go to these businesses and see how it impacts them so that we can come back with feedback to the council. Which I think is fair, if we're gonna even consider something this steep and this quick. You know, that people really be informed and really have those questions answered. Thank you.
Other questions for Keith or Gordon? Yes, right, go ahead.
Um, one of the things I'd like to suggest is, I'm afraid that tonight's meeting will be woefully inadequate in terms of educating people. Um, without education, this just seems like a meaningless tax hike and we're just part of the bad government that's mismanaged, and so we're sticking it to the taxpayers. When you're immersed in the reality of what, and the information of what's going on and the needs and the priority of those needs. Uh, it's a very different situation, and tonight, a very small portion of the city is going to be paying attention. All they're hearing is the blast about, oh, prices are going up. And they're on a fixed income, but they're missing the realities that we're dealing with in this meeting. And tonight's meeting will not be adequate to educate them. I would love to hear what the.
I would love to hear what the administration is thinking about in terms of educating the public so that we all kind of take this journey together. Otherwise, this just seems like a big tax hike. You know, to, um, Becky's point, it's not a tax. Um, it's, it, that hike represented, we're smart about it, or we're foolish and pay much more on the back end. We, a, and that, that must be some sort of education, uh, to the city. And tonight is not, uh, it's a good start. And it's added, uh, unfortunately, very inadequate in terms of educate, the education that needs to go on. I'm, I'm just curious if the administration is planning on something, uh, to help get this information out.
This Isaac Paxman hadn't been, that's a new thought for me, but certainly willing to have that conversation. Yeah, I haven't been familiar where we've even, yeah, said, I think it's a very fair suggestion, and when we were happy to work with you on.
Well, in my mind, Isaac, it's, these need to go hand in hand. Um, I don't feel comfortable taking big steps tonight without my neighbors having good information. Cuz right now, all they're getting is emotion and hyperbole. And people are not immersed in the realities. And if they, they were, um, I think they would engage differently. Now, we could argue all day long, should that, uh, hike be three percent or thirty percent? Or the twelve that's offered, but, but people aren't even on the same page in terms of why can't Provo be more proactive? Why can't Provo, they don't have the benefit of everything we've gone through. And I don't feel comfortable moving forward without them being a part of this process beyond just what's happening in the media and the, uh, the emotions surrounding this.
Thank you, Craig. Well, well said. And I view this evening's meeting also as really just a start of that public information process. Where we have professionals here who can speak intelligently to it. And, and, and although not a huge audience, a very focused audience. An audience who is tuned into this issue and is interested. Okay.
I, I think that's, that's important because we've had, uh, uh, a few people or a few outlets really doing a, a very fear mongering kind of scare tactic around this proposed rate. That doesn't create a nuance, nuanced conversation. It doesn't give real understanding to our residents what we're doing. And so there needs to be an equally aggressive counter to that so that people have good information, so they can understand why this is necessary. Um, and it needs to be more than just us talking in these public meetings. Because as we know, relatively few people watch our public meetings that we have here. But more people will, um, share reels that are shared on Facebook. And those short snippets reach more. And so we'll have more work to do on this.
Counselor McKay.
Um, and the, the hard thing is that we're saying we're doing a twelve percent increase of revenue. But I've done the calculator for multiple homes and not one has been below fifteen percent. Some are increased twenty-four percent, some are increased forty-four percent, some are increased sixty-one, some are increased a hundred, some are increased ninety-eight, some are increased fifty-four. These are huge increases, like astronomical. And they have not just had no increases the last few years. I've got that footage I sent to you, but we've had increases every year. And their eggs are increased. And if your school sucks and property tax are enormous, and the school board's doing a bond, and, I mean, like, the list of angst is intense. And people get angry. And then you have Elon Musk showing all this, and they're like, flawless, to get him into Provo City. You know, it's like, the people's like level of tolerance shot. And, um, so I know you just say that it doesn't matter and that their percentage is nothing, you use it so you need to pay it. It's exorbitant for a lot of people. Exorbitant. And even people that have been in homes for a long time, it's ancestral land, it's, you used to have irrigation, now it doesn't have irrigation. You know, they, their kids play on their grass, like, they aren't doing bad things. Um, so I have a lot of concern for, I haven't done one home that's less than a fifteen percent increase, not one. I feel that a lot of homes.
The, the hope that I've seen is that, uh, many people, at least rec, a lot of people recognize the need. They understand the need. It's just
It's too high.
Too high, and, and the process by which we proposed, um, generating those funds.
Joe, well, we've done a lot of meetings. There's no shortage of our meetings. It's been amazing. We, like, unfortunately, citizens don't pay attention. That's not our fault. And they just pay attention when they get some crazy texts from someone, making them pay attention. So, you know, that's happened. The crazy texts have happened. So, um, it's on their radar. So now it will take them time to catch up. I mean, I put this in my newsletter multiple times and everyone just was supportive. But it takes like suddenly calculating things and hearing numbers. They're like, whoa, it's like all hell broke loose. So it is, um, yeah, it's gonna take some time.
All right. There's no other comment. We're on schedule for another brief break. Thank you, Gordon, and thank you.
How long is the break, Gary?
Um, ten minutes.
Thank you.
Well, Travis, sorry, you missed the
I know, I missed the fun.
All right, well, we will reconvene our council a work session here with the next presentation, which is an ordinance amending Provo City Code Title fourteen regarding multifamily amenities. With citywide application that will be presented by Hannah Saltz, who is one of our planners. Saltz.
Saltz. It's a weird one. All right.
This is a lot to discuss in thirty minutes. I will try to get through staff's explanation as well as the feedback we got from the planning commission and get as much discussion input as we can this time uh, with whatever time we have left. Uh, if we need to continue this and the council needs more time before it goes to the evening meeting tonight, that's entirely fine. The planning commission needed a fair bit of time with it. So just know going in, the timeline is whatever you want it to be. This is following up on the EV discussion that the council had a while ago, about a year ago, of how to make EV charging more common in multifamily developments. Staff had the solution to current, new version of this and other city priorities with a score and amenities review that was a not quite as hands-off as leaving it to the full market, but not quite as hands-on as fully mandating it. We spent a lot of time interviewing developers, looking at what other cities are doing, putting together some numbers, tweaking the numbers till we felt like the scores were where they wanted them to be and working through that with planning commission as well. We also did a full survey of all of the multifamily developments in Provo in the last ten, fifteen years, seeing how they would rank up, uh, and what amenities they were putting in. Just to make sure this wasn't going to be something too onerous for developers, but then also hopefully it was communicating the priorities we wanted to communicate. Quickly, what it does and what it doesn't do, because there's been some concern about that. It does create a list with the scores. It clarifies existing requirements for amenity space. Already, each zone has to have a certain percentage of square footage for the property or the building dedicated to amenities. Not getting rid of that. We're proposing changing it for two zones, but those are just tweaks. As we've noticed, it's a little low. Um, so any, this, they have to meet the score requirement, and they also have to meet the square footage requirement. The score just helps guide them on how to fill the square footage requirement. Both are staying. We're not getting rid of those. It communicates city priorities for amenities. It allows developers to choose their amenities. They can choose anything off the menu as long as it hits the minimum score. We're not gonna tell them they have to put in a certain amenity, amenity for their tenants. Um, it also allows substitutions, so if something's not on the list, uh, the director can allow substitution and adjust the score accordingly. Staff will also keep an eye on the list if there are ways people are abusing loopholes they've found, or if we're finding that there are really common trending amenities that we didn't foresee right now, we will in the future update that list. The list can adapt and be flexible. It does not create a full green development package. It does not require EV spaces. There was a lot of debate on whether or not the city should do that. This leaves it for developers, but communicates that it's a high priority for the city, and we reward it. These are the two, I don't know that this light really works on the screen at all. Well, for the, the light, the LEDs absorb it, that's true. Um, for many of the things you saw in the downtown zone, we just found that the triggering number of units was a little low. Um, we propose increasing the triggering number of units. That means that any units, any project with fewer than this triggering number of units does not have to meet the square footage requirement. Here are the proposed scores. I will come back to this. This is where we're gonna spend most of our time. I just want to point out that the top two most highly valued floors are EV charging stations and infrastructure for EV readiness as well as the tech spaces. Don't worry about this list. It's in your packet. I'll have this on screen during our discussion part. From our analysis of recent developments, we found that most developments, not all, but most, were doing really well at offering good variety without this policy. Scores on our hypothetical table that we come up with ranged from forty-eight, which would not pass to one hundred sixty-three. There's the full list of scores you can see. Large developments, uh, size and development type alone didn't seem to be factors, but overlapped, pictured as a dual access grid. Uh, we did see some correlation. Large developments either went more luxury or more budget, things like student housing apartments. But both did very well at meeting the needs of their tenants. Even the budget large developments had a lot of indoor gathering space, the sort of things that are gonna be used by students. But they weren't necessarily expensive items like pools that are going to increase costs for students. It was hangout lounges, indoor gathering spaces, things like that. Which is repetitive, but appropriate for the demographic. Two of the largest developments also had the highest scores, but they're, again, quality levels are varied there. Small developments could do it well. Not all did. Some of our highest scorers were really small developments, and also our lowest scorers were smaller developments. They were on both sides of the spectrum. Um, townhomes specifically were our lowest and highest. It really seemed to depend on whether or not they were going to be budget townhomes, where they really just had like one green open space, maybe a small playground, which would not meet our sixty points. Or if they were more luxurious, um, townhomes with a variety of amenities, pools, things like that. We found one low-income housing anomaly that we allowed to use one-third of the required floor space for their square footage requirement. But they blew it away with amenities and had a score over a hundred, even with having less of a, a square footage requirement. So this can be done at a budget level. This was a mix of small units afforded for, intended for different income levels. We also found in one example, this is the only place where a name pops up, that amenities square footage included, they included their leasing office, a hallway, and a bathroom as part of their amenities square footage. But otherwise, had an incredible score of, I think, a hundred fifty-ish. So, good argument for increasing diversity and specific use for these amenity square footage spaces without adding a burden. This would close the loophole that you can't count anything as amenity space, but also they met it even without this. So not too embarrassed. Outdoor gathering spaces, we also found very greatly. So you'll notice in the table, we score outdoor amenity spaces kind of based on how they're furnished, rather than as one lump. Outdoor amenity spaces are all the same. With some of the higher scores over a hundred, getting into hundred fifties, hundred sixties, planning commission and staff explored increasing the total. Staff had a really robust, good discussion on this. We unanimously recommend keeping the score at sixty points. Planning commission agreed. The idea is that this, uh, this policy is meant to set a minimum acceptable standard, not an ideal one. We want to also make sure that we are being really sensitive to costs for low-income tenants and that these projects can be done at a budget level, but are still providing adequate and varied amenities for their tenants. The higher-end developments are offering a variety of amenities to attract more, um, clientele who can spend more on their housing. So we're not as worried about those. We also made sure that, uh, we often see the minimum amenity that we see is one indoor and one outdoor space that are minimally furnished. This closes the loophole. You couldn't do that and still get sixty points. Uh, an EV charging space or pet waste space, other city, uh, priorities would be easy ways to improve, improve the score and easily reach more than sixty. Getting into the proposed text, I'm not gonna read it all, I'll just highlight a little bit as we go, since the full text is in your packet. These requirements are already in the zoning code for how amenities work. You can't count setbacks or landscaping you have to have in your park strip is green space. That's not usable for tenants. Uh, multiple instances of the same amenity do count in each instance, like that student building that had multiple indoor gathering spaces for students on each floors. That's appropriate. Each one counts. Um, talking about the developer, or, um, the director being able to make changes and authorize flexibility to the list. This point B, we had some questions about how we would enforce maintenance of amenities. We don't patrol or enforce maintenance of amenities, but if we do find that there's a red flag, it gives us some leverage to be able to press the developer or HOA or whoever is maintaining it to replace the amenities and make sure the quality of life is high for their tenants. The EV parking spaces, there was some debate as to whether or not the space itself and the space for the infrastructure should count as a parking space or as amenity space, since it's technical. We propose that the developer should be able to choose in writing. We'll put it with the rest of their packet for their, uh, submittals. Uh, and if they do not choose, if, if they, um, for any reason don't choose, then they will count toward the parking space and not toward amenity minimums, just to make sure that those parking space requirements are met.
That's opposite of what it says.
Is it? I apologize. Yes, go with the text. Um, they will count toward amenity space and not parking minimums. So that that way, regardless of whether the parking space is counted as a parking, the, uh, EV space is counted as a parking space or not, we'll make sure the amenity spaces are, or the parking spaces are met. I've been saying these words so much in the last few months. Thank you. You're starting to get mixed. All right. We also note that seating can't count as an outdoor. That's the, the main list here, is that you can't have one table and five chairs and count it as six amenities, six outdoor provisions. Um, you also, we don't allow, or would not allow with this, uh, any property owner to charge for the use of these additional expenses, except for EV charging, where they'd be able to charge for the electricity rate.
I have a, a question. So in talking to the, the Millarays people, they're talking about, you know, all these fantastic amenities. And I'm like, I would love to go sit in a sauna. And they said that in different developments they've done, they can sell like a pass for somebody who doesn't live there to be able to go and use the amenities. So this code would specifically prohibit doing something like that?
It would.
Yeah. Okay.
This was a concern that we heard from developers that they didn't want, for example, if they put in a pet waste space, they didn't want the city letting other people in to use that pet waste space. They wanted it to just be for their tenants. So we put that in code for them. They didn't want to be forced to use their amenities as a business, which was never our intent. But we put this language in there just to make sure that we were clear on that. If that's a point that the council would like to change, you could do that.
I, I don't know that we need to, but it was interesting that that idea had come up and then we, you're, you're like two different traps. Bearing each other.
Yeah.
Well, my, my comment to that would be way back in the fifties, they put in those common space parks. You know, there's, there's one over it in the west side, and then there's a couple of them up over by Days Market, right? And since then, they've opened up those parks, and I think they even charge for some of those amenities, just so they can upkeep on their space. And so Pardon?
Charges at parks by days?
Yeah, there's those private parks, or that they charge them out for like, um, weddings and things like that. We have, there's houses all around them. They're just privately owned. They're like, almost like an HOA. They're supposed to take care of them, but a lot of times, they don't have the money to do so. And so it's an interesting concept that some of these apartment buildings could actually open some of that up and charge fees in order to help with those homeowner fees, right? Those HOA fees.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want them to charge the residents for that. They're already paying for that with their, their regular
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I wanna think on that a, a little bit more, but it's an interesting idea. I also do like the idea that on the, the previous slide, um, the maintenance of the amenities, because we've certainly seen the maintenance of the amenities, because we've certainly seen different apartments or former hotels that had swimming pools that are no longer being used and they just are a pit covered with a tarp. Being able to stop that in some way would be really nice.
Yeah.
Having the HOAs kind of maintain their things.
Yeah.
Well, I personally, in my private time, I'm also the president of my HOA, so I did very much write this from an HOA perspective, knowing what that's like. Um, the last piece of information before I, I turn it over to more open discussion is, we did talk with the Utah Valley Home Builders Association and sat down one-on-one with a developer as well to go through the scores and the concept and just make sure that we were on the right track and we weren't going to be stepping on too many toes or adding unintended burdens or cost. They all agreed the concept was very feasible, really not likely to increase costs. There was a bit of a disagreement. Some larger developers thought it was great to know what the city's priorities are. Again, though, looking at the scores, these are the ones who are going to be meeting our scores anyway, but they want to know what the city wants to see, so that they can bring projects that the planning commission and council are going to like. So this very clearly communicates that for them with pet space and EVs. Uh, some of the smaller developers didn't want the city telling them what developments to put in or acting like an HOA and monitoring them. We've made sure that there's language in here to reassure them that that's not our intent. There were a few that thought EV charging rank too highly, because only a few tenants would use it, but that's kind of up to the market and the, the project that they're building, how much they put in. The general agreement was that good developers will do this anyway, and the market is trending there. A, a direct quote, staff agrees. And we've tried to make sure that this development wouldn't be onerous for those who are already producing good products and producing a good high quality of life, but we still find value in the policy for setting a minimum standard for those developers who might try to cut corners, especially on lower-cost projects, and also for communicating those priorities like the, the larva developments that they wanted. Um, the planning commission agreed, but did have some concerns about cost. That was their big thing. They, they agreed with the, the communication of standards and policies, priorities, but really didn't want this to increase costs um, in a, a market that's already so housing burdened. We as staff don't feel like this necessarily does that. There are many ways that this could be met on a budget by projects that are already for low-income tenants. That's all the information I felt needed to be communicated from staff and the planning commission. I'll go back to the list of scores, so you can take a closer look at that. It's also in your packet. Is this policy as it is, something the council would feel comfortable adopting tonight? And if not, what information changes or time would you need?
Councilor Handley?
Uh, I want to thank you Hannah for all your good work on this. Uh, I really appreciate it. I really like that you've reached out to all the relevant constituents that you've thought this through as carefully as you have. And I quite like the way it's come out. Um, it seems like a reasonable set of, um, desirables that we would want, and I think it helps uh, gently but clearly to incentivize some of the things that we think are valuable for our city and for our citizens. Um, and I don't think, um, it seems like it doesn't place any unreasonable burdens, uh, from the feedback that you've provided. So I'm, I'm fully in support and grateful for all the work. So thank you.
The scoring seems fair to the way you've tried to rate the different amenities. I think it is fair.
It was based on scores received for usefulness to residents, cost to the developer, total square footage. We also weighed in the council survey that went out to you all about your priorities and then gave extra, um, weight boosts for those amenities that met city priorities. You don't need to see all the tables that went into it, but I promise it was.
Other questions for Hannah or comments or? Be ready to vote on this tonight, Becky?
But so, how did you decide the order? Did you just sort them?
The order?
Yeah, the order.
Uh, you can thank legal for that. I had it in score from top to bottom, but then they thought that certain ones should be clustered, like putting all the pet things together, even though they are.
Okay.
So I always do what legal tells me.
That's why I was just curious why, because it didn't seem like it's sorted by score. It doesn't seem like it's alphabetically sorted.
It's roughly by score, but if there is a common category item, it was pulled up to the highest winning item, just they appear together. Thank you.
Yeah, that's my fault. Um, when, when Hannah originally sent it out, it was sorted by, it wasn't entirely, was it entirely by score the first?
Well, it was entirely by score, except that outgrows at the bottom because.
Yeah, all of that was entirely. But then I suggested, for example, like the first two, the electric, the two electrical vehicle, electric vehicle ones were separated. Right. And that seemed weird to me, because it seemed to me like if you were a developer looking at the list, you would be wanting to know what the different electric vehicle options were and not search through the list for them. So I, so I was the one that suggested making some arrangements to pull things that were directly related next to each other, even if there's, even if it ruined the sorting.
And I should note that this table is very much balanced by these square footage requirements. For example, someone couldn't just put in five percent of spaces with EV charging, ready for EV charging, and then a small bike, um, vertical station. Those are both fairly low cost if you put them on early or in early on in the development process, but doesn't meet your square footage requirement. So you still have to provide something that is a more useful open space or media room or clubhouse or playground or something to offset that, that's more useful for more residents at a time to meet that concern about EVs not being able to be used by multiple people at once. These two are intended to be.
Just out of a viewpoint, would it be helpful to make those lines a little bit heavier to separate those topics? Topics, yeah, because I'm looking at this thinking. Yeah, I can make no not rhyme or reason with it with my head, but it, it would just make more sense to me if underneath that second electric vehicle, you made that line a little bit heavier and then do all those other ones.
Kind of mark the similar, the categories, the categories, a little bit, we could.
We can do that. That's less with what exactly is going to be adopted by ordinance tonight, if it, it comes tonight, and more with how it's published with the code.
Exactly.
So we can workshop that.
Exactly, the, the ease of reading. And I don't know, maybe the developers are used to seeing this, but my untrained eye is going, this is driving me crazy because I can't, I can't make any rhyme or reason to it. Thank you.
And Hannah, you were getting, uh, input feedback from developers along the way, I assume.
Yeah, mostly early in the process and then mid, then we did more workshopping with planning commission and brought it to you. We haven't gone back since, but we didn't feel it was necessary.
Great.
Any other questions or concerns?
I don't think so. Thank you, Hannah. We'll look forward to acting on this tonight then.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a, um, presentation scheduled by, from the, um, Zion's Vice President Zion's Public Finance, Brian Baker, as soon as he shows up. Oh, okay. Okay. Next is a, say him. Next is a discussion regarding housing and public finance tools. This will be presented by Zion's Public Finance Vice President, Brian Baker. Brian, thank you for coming today.
Absolutely. This is great timing.
It is.
I literally just walked in. You guys are a little ahead of schedule. Let's. Um, so the purpose, I think the request came from, uh, the idea that you have, you have stuff coming to you, people asking about various tools and asking the city to use these tools to help them develop in your city. So you justifiably have questions and wonder, is this smart? Does this make sense? What is the risk to the city? What are the, what are the questions we should be asking? What are the reasons that I would or would not do some of these things that I'm going to be asked to do? So, and in fact, I think your next agenda item is a, you know, an initial presentation about one of these, uh, these types of projects. So.
Right.
A number of years ago, before you did the Public Infrastructure District for the medical school, we had meetings, we talked to the, you know, we came to work sessions. An attorney who works with a lot of these development-type financings, Randy Larson from Gilmore and Bell, came as well and helped present. We talked about the creation of PIDs, Public Infrastructure Districts, how they work, why they had come about and what, uh, how the tool functioned and what the possible benefits and opportunities were. At that time, we talked about the city possibly putting together a, some jurisdictions have put together what they call a PID policy, which kind of governs and dictates that governing entities' approach to how they will use PIDs. Um, other entities have said, you know what, we'd prefer to just kind of look at these things on a case-by-case basis and not kind of pigeonhole ourselves and make it so that we become inflexible. Um, and in other situations, cities felt that was actually a helpful thing, because they had so many coming to them that they could just say, look, here's what we will do them for. Here are the specs and the things that we require. Comply with that, give us your application. But then you could say on the other side, well, then if somebody fits that and gives us an application, we've kind of told them that we're going to accept it because they fit all of our criteria. So you, um, you looked at the medical school. It was a great opportunity. I think it's, it's going, it, it is and is going to be a big success for the city. Um, and it was very simple because, well, we'll get, we'll get into that, but, um, there are a couple of issues for why the legislature seems to have seventy or eighty bills every session about housing. How can we help? And, you know, the governor's, um, energy policy, which, um, you know, Senator Curtis was a part of, you know, having, you having the, the thought all of the above. Anything that we can try, let's try it. Let's throw it out there, see if it works. That's kind of what the state is doing right now with house. You have an idea, you can get a legislator's ear, they will, will likely pass a bill that will give you an opportunity to try to implement the thing that you're doing to see if it will help address affordable housing, housing shortage, any of the issues that we hear about all the time. And so, um, this was just a study that was done. The data is a year and a half old, but, but essentially home prices in Utah, this is no surprise to anybody here, home price and, and the twenty twenty-four data is actually worse. Home prices in Utah are a couple hundred thousand dollars too high for the, the median borrower to be able to purchase. And so if you have kids graduating, getting going with their first real jobs and thinking, I don't want to be dumping money into rent, let's get into something. You're smiling over here. Is that, this is, this is, uh, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it is, is a, it is a real issue and a problem. I live in Mapleton. We bought our home seven years ago. We have a son who wants to move up to Salt Lake, because that's where his job is. His one-bedroom apartment rent, when he looked last year, would have been more than our mortgage. And, you know, just timing and, and things like that. And so that's what we're trying to look at, and that's what the state is saying. How do we help? How do we address this? Um, you'll see in, you know, some cities are like, hey, you know, I live in Mapleton. And so Spanish Fork has said, you want to build nine million townhomes? Let's do it. You know, and so there, you, you see them. There are rows of them everywhere. And then other cities are saying, uh, wait, we don't, we're not so sure about having all of this. They call that high density, but I, I'm from Los Angeles. That's not really high density. You know, you have, there are other options to get higher density than that, but so the issue is you have a gap in buying power and the cost that it takes to create the homes is another hurdle, because uh, if somebody comes in and, and they're going to build a home and it's going to cost, I heard a number in Mapleton for something like three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, you do some math on, you know, whatever your, your average home in Mapleton might look like, and that's, that is a barrier to entry for sure. As developers come and look at trying to put together projects that will provide housing, the earlier they are in the game, the more expensive it is to be financed. You know, kind of like if, if you're, if you're, if a startup company is looking for financing, the investor's going to expect quite a bit of return. Um, and then the further along you get in the process and the more you have a real product and you, you have a real thing, then the investors start to say, oh, I see where this is going. I see you've already been selling. I see, oh, now you have profits. That's great. I can put a, a more realistic investment into this and I require less of a return because there's less risk to me. And so where, you know, getting through these, these top-level claims to where a bank can finance something or where a developer can come in and build, uh, you know, in the four to six or seven percent range, um, that anything you can do to save developers' money on the cost of housing makes it more, um, affordable if you do it the right way. You, one of, one of the things that we heard, uh, I think the state has gotten past that, but for a number of years, anytime there was any sort of developer incentive or financing incentive for developers, they would just ask the question, how do we know we are not just giving a lot of money to a developer who was already going to make money on this, and now they're just going to make more money because we passed a law to give them tax credits or some other thing? And so that's, that's one of the things that, uh, that goes into these, is you look at it and you say, okay, what's the gap? Where is it that the developer comes up short and says, if I had this help, I could make the units this much more affordable. I could hit these sort of AMI targets. I could build this many more. Um, I could drop the cost of them. And so, uh, as a city, you have, you have your vision for what you want to see happen here. And then when you receive proposals and things like that and you're looking at them, if you say, ma'am, that's exactly the project we want, and they say, yes, but it's really not going to make us any money and we're not going to do it because of that. But if you were able to help us with a PID or help us with an HTRZ, depending on where it's located or any of these other tools, that might get us over the hurdle and then we could bring this project that you want. Um, and it's, it's again, it's trying to, when we talked in our bonds one oh one a couple of months ago, it's the difference between um, what the, what the developer would want, which if I'm a developer and I own land or I have the option on land, I want to build the thing that's going to make me the most money. City has a vision and they say, well, the thing that's going to make you the most money may not necessarily be what we want. As a result, uh, let's talk about incentives and give and take. And if the developer, you know, if they could have made eighteen percent return doing the thing that you didn't want them to do, but they're only going to make ten percent return doing the thing you do want them to do, and you can help bridge the gap so that they're willing to go do the thing that is more in the city's best interest and more in the interests of the residents and taxpayers, then that's a plus and that's a positive. And so, um, again, this is just another illustration there that the, the closer you get to being ready to build, the less expensive it is. Um, and so these projects, you know, at the state level, they're trying to cut down, uh, you know, the red tape and, you know, difficult issues with zoning and things like that. Uh, I'd love to talk, I, I believe you're probably going to talk through public infrastructure districts in your next item a little bit. Um, but so I wanted to just kind of touch on, um, a few of the highlights. You have already done one. Who was here when you did this? And who remembers it from council? Anybody?
Rocky Mountain.
So, so, yes, yes, yes. And so, um, it's, it's in the past. Um, this is a tool, public infrastructure districts, uh, that has been used a lot. Um, in, in recent years, a, a lot of developments in the state are being financed using these. So you might have heard of the Utah Inland Port Authority, all of the transactions that they do are through public infrastructure districts. Uh, the Point of the Mountain, um, they're redeveloping the whole old prison site. Those bonds are going to be issued through a public infrastructure district. Um, Utah City, which is like the, I don't know, the stepchild of Vineyard, you know, that's kind of right there by the transit district, that whole thing. They approved nine, you know, nine or ten PIDs to go in there. And so it's, it's a thing that's being used a lot. And the reason it's being used a lot is because it does what I just described. It helps to cut, um, developer costs in such a way that you can get a better product if it's done correctly. So, um, the issue when this was passed, it, a public infrastructure district, you are the creating entity of a public infrastructure district in your city. Welcome, mayor. Um, and that means that you hold all the cards. You don't have to create it. If you don't create it, it, it doesn't exist. Um, and they would have to go and look at other options. Because you are the creating entity, you get a lot of input into what the governing document is that creates the public infrastructure district. Once the public infrastructure district is created, it is its own governmental entity and you have no more power. The only powers you have are those that were included in that original governing document. And so if you, um, I'm, I'm trying to think of a good example where, where you just create a public infrastructure district and then something happens and you say, oh, wow, we really don't want them to be doing that, but there's nothing about it in the document or it's specifically allowed in the document, then, then you kind of, you're, you're at your limits there, because you don't really have the ability to go in and change what it is that, uh, that was agreed to originally. And so with a public infrastructure district, you know, you'll have a project presented to you. You might say, hey, that's great. That's the kind of project. You might say, hey, that's great, that's the kind of project we want. Um when the public infrastructure district governing document or the creation document is put together, you want to make through that, make sure that it has gone through very carefully so that the city completely understands what are our risks, what are our opportunities, what, what is it that they can and cannot do without having to come back to us? And in most cases, when these are done for kind of a discrete, specific project, the answer is you want to have that all in there so that they they go do what they want to do, but also what you told them they could do, and there's agreement on that before the whole thing happens. So that when it's done, you look back at it and say, hey, that's a pretty, pretty awesome medical school down there. You know, we're glad that that happened. And if we, if we helped them through that public infrastructure district, that's great, we're, we're glad to be a part of that. So um some end, you know, I mean, there are different types of public infrastructure districts and different purposes. Um you know, if it's for multifamily housing, or if it's for mixed use commercial, or if it's for you know, a business park, you know, there, there are different things there where the city could look at it and say, what are the types of things we want to incentivize? What are the types of things we want more of? Um and if, if there's a project, is that the kind of thing we want to incentivize? Because you have to create it. If someone came and pitched, they said, hey, we own land and we want to build, we just want a year round circus there, we want a big tent, we want all this stuff, can you help us? And if that wasn't something you wanted, you obviously would just say that's not the type of thing that we're trying to encourage here. And so no, we're not going to help put that together for you. But if it is, if it is a project that you look at and say, this fits with what kind of our vision for this area of the community was and the the types of things that we're looking for, um then it makes sense to consider what it is that you're going to help provide by creating a public infrastructure district. What you would also want to know is what is the benefit to them? You know, like, is it, and it's, they call it the but for argument, is this a project that you do anyway? And we're just kind of greasing the wheels a little bit or making it more profitable. So either what is the financial gap that this helps to overcome? Or what are the enhancements that the project gets that might benefit the community based on uh us participating here? And so sometimes you'll see things like, well, hey, we'll put in a a water tank that the city needed anyway, or we'll put in some trails, or we'll leave some open space, or you know, things like that. Where the city could say, we're doing this, we're helping them, we know there's a financial benefit to them. And what's the benefit to us? Here's what it is. And at at the very base case, it could be, they wouldn't do this project without this help here, we want the project to happen, there it is. And on the other, you know, on the, on the top side, it could be um this project becomes more viable and they can do more stuff. And because we're doing this, they're going to be able to add X, Y, or Z, which is something the city would like to see. Yes.
The question I have, you're basically saying, if we already have a development agreement with X, Y, and Z in it, it probably wouldn't do us any good to have something like this because then this turns around and makes I guess the question I follow down, if if we have this development agreement, the X, Y, and Z has to be done no matter what. And they just want to make this a more affordable project by doing a PID. Would it really be more affordable having this PID where they have to have their taxes increased? Or just having the developer do it and then having him pass that on to the consumer as they buy the home?
It's a great question. Um and I think the, the, the answer that you would get is that the cost of borrowing through a PID is generally lower than the cost of private borrowing for a developer. And so if if they're able to go and get tax exempt financing that's secured by, so, so you're allowed to charge a property tax within a a public infrastructure district. And so whether you charge it or not, you can pledge property taxes and that, that helps the security of the bonds. So the bonds become there's a large market for public infrastructure district bonds, most of those bonds are not rated. Uh which doesn't mean that they're terrible investments, it means that you wouldn't want your grandma and grandpa to probably invest in them, you know, um but they're not, they're not rated. Um and so their rates are higher than what, for instance, a Provo city rate would be. If you, if you would borrow at three and a half percent, public infrastructure district bonds might be in the five and a half percent range. But compared to what they might pay in, if they just had to go to a bank or or try to find commercial financing on their own, that's a, that's a bargain. And so that helps them to lower the cost. And so that's something that either increases their ability to do the project or increases what they can add to the project to make it better. One of the questions that is um worth asking, uh especially on residential projects, um is if everybody in a specific residential area is paying a slightly higher property tax than everybody else. I mean, you have the ability to put fifteen mils, um a point one five percent on on a project. Uh that's bigger than most overall property tax rates for a lot of cities, you know, I mean, so point, you know, fifteen mils would be a huge amount, but if it's, if it's five mils or if it's seven mils. The state has taken great lengths to make sure that people who buy homes in those areas understand that they are signing up for higher property taxes. Or there's something in the, in the agreement that requires that that portion of the bonds be paid off when they're sold to the end user or, you know, to a individual residential purchaser. Um because the, the issue is the city wants to increase their property tax rate. You go to do that. And then you have some portion of the city that says, man, we are getting terror, we're, we're just getting hosed here, this is terrible. Because they're paying a property tax rate that includes the public infrastructure district and what that financed. And so if there isn't good clarity and communication there about who's paying that, how long they're paying that, why they're paying that, what they got out of it from the very moment they buy that home, then the city has, you know, then you could face headwinds when you're trying to increase your overall city property tax rate because, because that portion of the residents would think we're, we're being, we're already being hit too hard, you know, relative to everybody else in the city, yes.
Have you seen this done in other areas where? Cause you know, buying, especially your first home is so overwhelming and you have the stack of documents and they're going through. Have you seen people just completely spaced that they have to pay that extra property tax? And then when they get those things, they're just completely upset anyway?
Not, not so much because there, there is, there are some strict requirements on, on notifications and kind of how that's done. From the state level, that was a very uh large concern from the beginning with things like that is that, that people would find out after the fact that they were getting hit with, you know, I mean, you know, five mils or eight mils on a half a million dollar home is is going to end up being, you know, a thousand dollars or more every year. And so that's a, that is a chunk. And so the um the idea that it's not disclosed, I don't think that's a problem. The idea that people don't completely totally process and understand it um is is another issue. And so again, when you're addressing um an application, you can say, okay, how do, what do we do to mitigate that? How do we make sure that anybody who comes in here before we create this so that you're off to the races? How do, how do we make sure that that anybody who is an end purchaser, you know, and it, and it's different for commercial, for commercial properties and commercial investments and things like that. Um I think there's an assumption that they're more sophisticated investors and that um that they would understand this, you know, in a, in a more sophisticated way than your average just retail home purchaser. Yes.
So uh is there any way to guarantee um uh that the any savings that the developer gets from this? Say they get cheaper loans or whatever. Is there any way to push some of those benefits onto the, the price of the homes? Or is that is the argument that you only want to do a PID so that a pro, a development actually happens that otherwise wouldn't happen? Or is this actually a tool that can drive down the costs?
Yeah, well, homeowners. It, it absolutely can, it's just there, like I said, there are a mix of possible benefits. And so if your applicant says, we can't do this unless we get this, this done, and here's where we're going to price the units, and it's got to be market price, then that's one thing. Um you would understand that if they were if they're not selling affordable housing, which affordable housing is deed restricted to meet certain AMI requirements, then it comes out on the market and it's going to sell at whatever the market price is. And they don't, and they, it would be difficult for them to say, this next unit, this next, uh you know, go down the block, go two blocks down and you can buy this exact same home for a hundred thousand dollars less because we did a public infrastructure district. Somebody is going to take that benefit, right? It'll, if, if the developer doesn't take it right away when they sell at market price, the person who buys it the first time will flip it and sell it because they'll say, wow, I can make a hundred thousand dollars just by buying this reduced price home. And uh because it saves me money relative to the one down the road that other people are already paying for. So it's, it's a conversation with the, with the developer a- about what the benefit is. You can ask them to calculate the benefit, you know, like how that helps them and what that benefit goes towards. You know, the, the, the benefit helps the city because we're putting in a curb gutter sidewalk that you would have needed anyway, or we're putting in a road that you were going to do, but we're getting there ahead of time and we're using this money to help facilitate that. Or you know, it, it's, it's going to help us, it's going to help us sell some affordable units at, at lower AMIs, or it's just going to help us get the project done and figuring out. Um again, that's where it's worth putting in the time to, to do some analysis and say, um do we have confidence that we aren't just saying, you know, you're, you were going to make five million dollars on this, now you're going to make ten, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Glad we could help, you know, like that's, uh um because, because you'll because there is uh you know, public, the public gets to watch all of this. And you'll have to, whatever, whatever you approve, you'll have to be able to look back the next time someone else comes and says, hey, we want to do what they did, and you say, woo, wow, I don't know about that. And then you, then you kind of put yourself in a situation where you want to feel comfortable and confident that the actions you're taking are things that the city feels comfortable doing for specific reasons. And if somebody came in with a similar type of reason, you'd be like, yeah, we feel, we feel strongly about that because we did it this time. I don't think you're going to have a lot of other medical schools coming by. BYU doesn't finance anything, as you know, uh unfortunately, but uh um and so what you'll have is a variety of other projects, mixed use projects, residential projects, different sorts of things where you get to determine do we like this project and want to facilitate it? And then what's the benefit that comes from this? Both to the city and to the developer, and how is that divvied up? And and what helps us to feel like this is a good deal for our residents and a good thing for us to be doing? It doesn't cost you money. But it impacts, as we've talked about, with things like a property tax levy on the, on the properties, um it can impact um the way those properties interact with the city in the future. And so that's just something you need to be aware of. But, but like I said, these are being done in a lot of places. Um you know, down in Southern Utah, very large scale, you know, where you've got you know, a hundred acres of, of untouched ground and you can go in there and put in, you know, thousands of homes. That's not the type of project you're going to see here in Provo. Um but those are, those kinds of things are, are being done across the state.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
To make sure I understand how it works. So we as the, the city would be creating a, a head and the initial board would just be composed of basically the developer, because that's who owns the property right now in that. And then as the developer sells the property, then the board gets repopulated with the residents who are within that.
Yes.
And the, that board is the one who decides what tax to levy, what mill rate.
Well, it, it's actually the, the job of the board of a PID is not that glamorous.
Okay.
If I were living in a pit area, you'd have a hard time getting me on the board. Because essentially, the, the reason the pit exists is to issue debt to fund infrastructure.
Yeah.
Once the debt is issued, um it's a legal created entity, so it's got to have, you know, it's got to have notifications of meetings, it's got to have annual audits and things like that. And it has to have a board. But the reason it exists is to collect and pay the debt. And once the debt is paid off, it ceases to exist.
So it's, it's only for the issuance of that first debt, the board can't say, we want to do another one.
Well, um the debt can be refinanced. And if there, I mean, it would, it would go to what was in the original agreement. If you told the developer, you can, you know, you can't do fifteen mils, but you could do seven mils. And then they issued debt that pledged four mils, would they have the ability to come back and borrow against the other three mils at some point? Well, possibly.
Okay.
Uh but, but it, it is limited in scope. And again, that's why the creation document is important because that tells you whether they might be coming to you twenty five years down the road for another bond, or or whether it's just going to be, we're financing this. All the homes will be built, they'll be sold, the bonds will be paid off in this year, and then then it's all over.
Okay. And as the creator, we can say when the pit should end, when it should be dissolved?
Well, there, there will be, um they'll be asking, they'll be, they'll come to you and they'll say, hey, we would like to issue bonds that would pledge, you know, this many mils or would pledge, you know, maybe we'd pledge an assessment on our own property. The reason these, the reason uh uh generally, state level people don't have a problem with this is, it's a developer coming to you and saying, we own this land. Can we tax ourselves to make it easier for us to finance this? Can we throw a property tax on ourselves right now? That's who would be paying it. So that we can go put in the curb gutter and sidewalk, or put in the pump station, or put in, you know, whatever it is that needs to be put in to facilitate the development. And so, you know, the state looks at it and says, well, yeah, it's your land. I mean, if you want to tax yourself and if that will help get the development or the residential units or whatever built that the local government wants to see, great, let's do it. And then it just becomes a, a question of okay, but after those are built and they're sold and, you know, property changes hands and stuff like that, does everybody understand what's happened there and feel comfortable with what the, what the ripple effects of that are? And that it's a positive thing? Yes.
So in essence, this is like a special service district?
Um it is a, it is a almost like a single purpose special service district. The, and, and in most cases, like at the Point of the Mountain, they're going to have a, a they're going to issue bonds through a bunch of different PIDs, like when they do phase one and two and three, they'll have a different PID that issues those. They will have a, an overall governing PID that kind of can help with, you know, the medians, who's going to take care of like mowing the grass and planting the flowers and the medians of all the streets? Well, that's, that's going to be the, the over, the governing PID. Because Draper doesn't want to pick that up and do it, whi- which is where it's located. And so um a special service district operates forever and provides specific services, that, that's what they need to do to be able to form. In this case, you're borrowing money to, to help build something. And the trigger for what ends it is when the debt is paid off. And what the PID actually does while it's in existence, in most cases, is nothing other than collect the taxes or the revenues and pay the debt so that there's not a default on the bonds. One of the things that obviously what um why the developers like to say, hey, this is, this is great for you because you are not on the hook. They are not asking you to pledge your revenues, to pledge your property taxes, to pledge anything that the city has. If the development completely goes under, the people who have purchased the bonds from them are sophisticated accredited investors who are, you know, um in, in the olden days, we probably wouldn't call this anymore, but you used to have to have people sign what they called a big boy letter that basically stated, I am a sophisticated investor, I understand there's a lot of risk to this. And if it goes under, I have nobody to blame myself. I've done my own due diligence. And so all of the bonds that are sold through these are sold to those types of investors who know what they're getting into. They don't expect them to default, but there is a risk in buying non-rated securities at higher interest rates. They make a lot of money off them, but they also carry the risk that of, of non-payment. Some of the way PID bonds can be structured could be well, the development didn't happen as quickly as we thought. Um but instead of, like, if the city missed payments because you, your revenues didn't grow as quickly, you'd be in default. Uh PID bonds can be structured so that there's the ability to essentially pay what's come in so far. And then pay as it comes. And you have investors that are willing to take that kind of risk. You know, I may, I may not get my full payment this year. And it may be delayed coming down the road. But that's, but that's part of the market for those bonds and it, and it's functional and it's robust and it works. And there are you know, hundreds and hundreds of millions uh that were sold in Utah last year. And billions of bonds of similar type sold nationally.
So theoretically, if I didn't have sidewalk and my neighbors didn't have sidewalk, we could all get together and do a PID and the sidewalk in, have to pay it back through our taxes.
Yes, but there, there's, there's, if it was just you and your neighbors, we'd probably just say, you could just do it. And, and the city was like, yeah, we'll, we'll help facilitate that. You'd probably just do a special assessment bond, which doesn't involve an outside, you know. Um in this case, the PID, you know, you wouldn't want to be, I don't, I, I wouldn't imagine residents would want to be their own governing body with their own meetings and financial statements in order to finance curb gutter and sidewalk. The city can do that through uh through a special assessment bond where all of you pledge your properties. And then we calculate how much it would cost each property to put in curb gutter and sidewalk, and then you borrow. And you say, okay, over twenty years, that's going to cost your home and every home in that area, you know, six hundred dollars a year, or you know, whatever the number would be. And then you could pay it off over time through a borrowing. And a special assessment bond of the city would be a more economically efficient way to do that than a public infrastructure district. Those are, those are, it's mainly a developer tool um for a new project that has like one landowner because they need you do need one hundred percent of landowner consent. Um so it's usually either one large landowner or like two or three who get together and say, let's go in on this project. We all agree and, and then that'll like enables it to roll forward.
Thank you.
Um just, I want to, I know you're talking PIDs later, but I want to skip to some of the other important uh issues here. Let's see, we've kind of talked on, on more of this stuff and, and kind of what you're doing. Yep, you all are aware of that. So you, you can see here, like the PID tax with uh twelve mils with uh, twelve mills or with one point, you know, out of, it ends up being about ten percent of the overall property tax of the area in that area of Salem. If you put fifteen mills on something, that's that's a significant property tax. I could see them doing stuff. I worked with a a water reclamation district up in uh, by Park City, the Snyderville Basin Water Reclamation District. They have the largest sewer impact fee in the state. It's like twenty-eight thousand dollars. And it's just, that's what you pay if you wanna buy a lot up there, you know, that's just the sewer impact fee because that's that's what it costs to do that up there. And so in certain places, you know, a higher property tax rate doesn't, you know, no one bats an eyelash, but um, in, I would guess in Provo, like most of our local municipalities, there would be, uh, you know, the people who buy those properties would wanna know what they were getting into and what that was gonna cost them. Let's see. So again, this is just, you need to make sure you understand what you're getting out of it. Um, and it could be parks and trails or reduced buy-in costs for residents, you know, just making the project affordable. Um.
Wait, can you explain that? Cause that's what I was asking about and I don't understand how this, how this helps with cost.
So if if there are, in if infrastructure is built such as a road that wouldn't have otherwise existed, and maybe that road goes to one development, but there's spots for like several other developments there. It makes it more affordable for other people to come in later. Um.
Yeah.
And let's see. So you have a, the the city has a uh, you've done a lot of redevelopment agency type of stuff over at the mall and other places. Um, this just basically says that a public infrastructure district is for the city, it's off balance sheet. It's not, it's not something that goes in your audit. It's not something that you have to report and say, this is something that we were a part of. Um, you do have to do that for, for instance, like helping the the Food and Care Coalition or or issuing debt through Southern Utah Valley Solid Waste or or entities like that. But in this case, it's a completely separate entity, so I will not spend more time on that there. Um, HTRZs, this was the other, the other uh, issue that that we were asked about. So the idea with an HTRZ Housing and Transit Reinvestment Zone Act, um, the idea was to help um, promote uh, economic growth around transit hubs. Which makes all the sense in the world, um. If you can, you know, I mean, if if you can live next to a transit hub, if you, I mean, they they talk about the, I work with UTA a lot and they talk about the last mile being the most difficult part of transit, you know, like I live in Mapleton. For me to get from Mapleton to your front-runner station, if I didn't have a car, is pretty much impossible. For me to get to the closest bus from where I live in Mapleton to then get the bus to the front-runner station is also almost impossible because of a three-mile walk. Um, or and so what they're trying to figure out how to do is, well, if a whole lot of people lived right next to the transit station, wouldn't that facilitate a lot of economic growth? Wouldn't, you know, you you put a bunch of, um, I don't know condos, townhomes or whatever close by, so there are a lot of people there, there's a nexus of demand for services, for restaurants. Um, and then on the other end, you know, I I know people who take tracks or front-runner into Salt Lake and they walk a block and a half to their office, you know, uh, the church office building. A huge percentage of the employees of the church office building use that. University of Utah for a time had like ninety percent of their students using public transit to access at a time, um, two decades ago, when transit was brand new and there wasn't a lot in Utah County. And they talked to BYU and they talked to the University of Utah, University of Utah said, we're gonna make, we're gonna give all of our students a pass. And they had an incredible usage rate and then, um, and what they were able to do was actually build a lot of buildings by demolishing parking. They had a lot of surface parking and they just say, we don't need this anymore. So they could, you know, plow over a a concrete parking lot and put a new building there. Um, whereas at BYU, for a while, we were building more parking because everybody wanted to bring a car. And I hope, I think that that's kind of maybe peaked out when when we have the UVX going, which has been fantastic. It's it's so fun to go by and see that and how many people are using it. Um, Transit Reinvestment Zone, designed to help address the housing problems with mixed-use multifamily affordable housing developments within a third of a mile radius of front-runner stations. I assume somebody here has taken like a um, has taken a measuring stick and gone from the platform of the front-runner station down to the mall to just kind of make sure that we can get there, that you can touch the the edge of one of those pieces of property, um, because that's all that is required. If you can, if you, if you fall, if any part of the parcel falls within that one-third mile, then then you're good and it covers the entire thing. Um, but so what this would do, um, in the, in the olden days, when somebody wanted to do a tax increment financing or collect tax increment, they had to meet with the taxing entity committees, so they'd have to go and they'd have to talk to Central Utah Water and say, we would love to build this project and we'd like to take the property taxes that would have accrued to you and take eighty percent of them, a hundred percent, or you know, whatever portion for ourselves to help pay for that. The most difficult conversation was always with the school district. Right? Because of your property tax bill, more than half of it goes to the school district and that's true everywhere in the state. And so a lot of these um, projects would have a difficult time getting buy-in from the different taxing entity committees. And so, um, and so the legislature naturally steps in and says, hey, we'll just do this, then they don't get a say. You know, so that 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 doesn't sound super nice, but that's essentially what it does is is if you go through the HTRZ creation process and it is approved, then their taxes are committed uh, over the period that the HTRZ exists and there's, there's really no rejoinder or or anything that they can do about it. But the idea is they made it tailored and specific enough that they're not gonna pop up everywhere because you've gotta be right where there's a nexus of transit and potential development that can facilitate this growth. And so, um, couple of things that are interesting for the city, you create and submit the proposal. So when you have uh, someone who comes to you and says, hey, this is what we'd like to do with XYZ land, um, it's something that the city would help put together and turn it into the governor's office of economic development. They would have an independent review of the proposal. Um, Zion's Banks wo- works with the state and we have done most of those so far, like we'll do the review. And and the idea of the review is the the but-for analysis. What is the economic benefit that accrues from taking property taxes from the school district and everybody else over this time period? And what, what does that do for the project that couldn't otherwise be done? And because it's housing and transit, uh, with a focus on housing, the real focus is how many affordable units are there? And doing the HTRZ, how many more affordable units do we get? Or what income thresholds can we hit? Can we lower to? Because we're making this project more affordable by facilitating the infrastructure, uh, some of the infrastructure investment upfront through the HTRZ. So uh, the HTRZ committee, if they approve the proposal, then bonds are issued that are backed by that tax increment. And so, um, we've seen these be successful um, in the state. And again, there aren't a lot of places that that they can be done. Does anyone have any questions? This is a different slide. Does anyone have any questions about HTRZs?
Um, how often do you see them denied by the state?
Um, a couple of times, but but honestly, I can, I can quite candidly say that the the applications were terrible. I mean, I I don't, I mean, it's, it was just like, you looked at the application and said, I think all of these, like, all of the numbers are wrong. I mean, it's, the the state wants these things to happen. Um, and so the question is, is this the type of thing they wanna see happen? I don't see a lot of politicking at the, at the HTRZ committee about favoring one area or developer or project over another. They're just trying to see, does this really do what the HTRZ is supposed to do? Which is enhance the availability of affordable housing in a specific area. And if it doesn't, then they have some explaining to do because that's, that's the whole purpose of it. Um, yes.
So Bill, is this gonna be an RDA? Cause the city makes and submits the proposal, that's not gonna be me. Is this gonna be the RDA guy or is it gonna be Aaron? Because he's the planner guy? This gonna be you?
It'll be one of us.
I I and I would, I would say, I would say, if you have a developer who has a proposal and the, you couldn't make the proposal without them, right? So you, the city, it comes in in your name, in the city's name, it's the city's proposal to GoEd. But if a developer has, this is what we're gonna do, this is what the the scale and the speed with which we're gonna build and what the absorption rate of, you know, construction will look like and this is what, you know, they would provide a lot of that information because that's gonna, you know, kind of inform the case of of whether and to what degree it's necessary.
Okay, to me, this is all really clearly under economic development. So if you have that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike has a question too.
Yes.
Yeah, um, so at least state law says that there can only be eight HTRZs per county. Do you have any indication on if there are any current HTRZs in Utah County?
I don't believe there are any that are currently in Utah County. And and so, uh, you 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 couldn't really have more than eight in Utah County because if you took every single front-runner stop, that's pretty much it, right? I mean, that that would be about it. You you have the ability around a bus rapid transit hub. Um, but you know, your bus rapid transit hub, I think, would probably be considered your central station and Orem's would be considered their station. Um, and so it it isn't like, it isn't like Orem could just pick the bus stop right across the street from University Place and say, boom, HTRZ, you know, you actually need a a transit hub, which is where kind of things garage and come and go.
By our central station?
Well, the 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 Provo front-runner station.
That would be the only one?
Well, that would be, that's the, that's the the place, so.
Well, I mean, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm I'm referring to the UVX. So if if I thought I heard you saying that a UVX station could qualify.
Well, I don't, I I don't believe, I don't believe a UVX station can qualify. Um, I think, I think the front-runner stations can all qualify and then anything else that sets up is like, you know, if there was a bus rapid transit thing that went from here out to Eagle, you know, out to Eagle Mountain and there was a stop at Eagle Mountain, which is where all the buses turn around and garage, they probably develop legislation, again, if if you thought, man, we could really use one over here.
I was just thinking about the the two universities.
Yes.
And their connection to UVX, wondering if like, one of the BYU stops that meets the criteria for something where you could say, you you've got the need for high-density housing, you already have a lot of high-density. I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying I I think this is a good idea, I'm just curious if it's even an option.
I don't think it currently does. I I don't think a bus rapid transit station will, and you you'd have to find enough land that was not owned by the university to make it, you know, cause all that land is tax-exempt. Um, but uh, let's see.
George, I think that's where G B U went.
So we have uh, CRAs, which is kind of the old economic development tool, which Provo City used. Uh, you did a great job of, you know, the Cubby Center for the Arts was built with uh, redevelopment fu- agency funds. Um, public infrastructure districts, which you're gonna be up to your ears in, you know, I mean, the the, this is kind of like the the new tool. I looked at, um, I got a list of like the deals that all of my colleagues are working on and like half of the deals that they're working on right now involve public infrastructure districts of some kind or another. Um, housing and transit reinvestment zones, we just kind of touched on. Uh, first home investment zones, so there are a couple of new things that have come along and not been used very much, homeownership promotion zones. These are, these are set up specifically to um, get affordable housing done. And some of them, you have specific amounts of land that need to be covered. And and they're the types, both of these are the types of things that if you're talking, someone wants to put together like eight homes or something like that, that's not what you're looking at. And so in a, in a place like Provo where you'll have some new development with with the ability to put in twenty, thirty, forty plus homes, but generally not a lot of that, you know, cause you'd have to, you'd have to bulldoze a couple of blocks and there, there isn't a lot of just pristine land that that hasn't been touched. Um, these are less likely here for that reason. Um, but all of them have specific affordable housing targets. And if you, if uh, if the developer approaches you and says, we'd like to look at doing something like this because then we think we can make um, sixty percent of the homes at eighty percent of the county county median sales price, that's, that's a, that would be something that I would think would be attractive here. Um, in Park City, everything's so expensive that they've gone from, they talk about affordable housing sometimes, but then they use the word attainable housing, right? Because um, affordable is specific, you know, sixty and forty percent AMI, that's really tough to hit. But in Park City, if you're making a hundred and twenty percent of AMI or a hundred and forty percent, can you afford a home? No. So, you know, they they don't qual, those people don't qualify for affordable housing, but they also can't buy a home any other way. And so, uh, there are levels of need and the tools are are being designed and put in place to try to help uh, address all of those needs in different ways. Again, uh, so when, when banks get involved with developers, there are, there are uh, low-income tax credits that can be used and applied for. And typically, the city doesn't need to be too involved in stuff like this. It would usually be the developer who would put something forward with the planning commission and say, hey, we wanna build this and it's gonna have this many affordable units and we're gonna use Lytech credits and and something like that. And so, and those, those would be, um, those are great things because if you can get that benefit, that helps to really drive down the level of affordability. Um, you know, so like here with the four percent, you you're looking at, uh, you know, less than fifty percent of AMI on twenty plus percent of the units. Um, and that's, that's in the range where you probably have a lot of people in Provo who would fit those income thresholds and love to be in some sort of a home. These are just some different examples that we've seen around, you know, a lot of uh, you know, I love, I love the apartments across from the the new temple and just, so Provo gets to sit back and look and say, okay, what is our vision for things? And developers will come and say, hey, we got something that looks just like this and we'd like to pitch you on it. And here's how we think it fits in and then you get to decide, um, does that fit in with what we're looking for and want? And then based on that, um, what are the steps that we can take as a city to help promote that? Um, I won't, this, so they tweak the legislation every year. All of these bills, the pit bill, it's been tweaked every single year. Um, and so those are changes, nothing crazy that we're seeing right now. Um, and then this is just like kind of a summary slide. If you're trying to incentivize people to build here, um, then you can see the two different sides of what the city is able to do. Um, by basically deregulating, you know, like trying to make regulation less onerous and difficult. And at the same time, um, providing incentives and and helping out where you can when the developer vision matches your vision, or you can bring those two together and make them work together because there's some uh, incentive being provided to the developer that was different from what they wanted to do, but will make the project more uh, viable for them, uh, if they have your help. Uh, it's great when, um, it's great to see cities and developers work on these things like kind of hand in hand because a lot of times it really is projects that you wanna see happen and they wanna see happen. It'll be good for them. You want every developer who builds in your community to have a great experience and to make money, right? You you don't, I mean, that's the goal, i- is is for them to be able to do that, to help bring about the vision of what you wanna see happen in the city. And so it's trying to get those forces to converge um, in a way that works for everybody and I have more stuff in there. If anyone has any questions about any of those other slides, uh, you're in a great place where compared to all the other uh, Wasatch Front Counties, um, commute time for um, workers in Utah County is lower than all the other big counties. And so it's kind of a good thing, um, which means that workers have access to uh, jobs that are close and that makes it easy for them to kind of stay close to where they work, yes.
What does this Lytech stand for?
Low income housing tracks.
Thank you.
Part of crossing and uh, Liberty Center, but I think nobody's been.
Which ones?
Part of crossing.
Oh.
Liberty Center.
So that's like the section eight? Kind of bouncing with it?
Slide, so. So, I think eighty percent of those buildings are low-income units.
So have you worked your computer magic and drawn your line and said that mall property is within a third of the mile of the front-runner station?
Believe it is. Yeah.
Google Maps was no help to me. You need a GIS and I'm pretty sure, I I thought to myself, like, the first time I heard mall and HTRZ, I thought, well, the very first thing anybody would have done is map that out just to make sure that it was in the. Yeah, that, yeah, for sure. But yeah, that'll do it.
Questions? It's been very helpful, Brian.
Yeah, and and again, if you have questions about the slides or again, as you go through presentations and discussions about different projects, you might have other questions come up. That's, that's what we're around for, so.
It felt like a high-level MBA class on the computer. You really helped us work through it.
Thank you. Not the intention. Um, my colleague, uh, Mike, so we hired a guy from Park City who was there, he was a budget analyst, but he was kind of too smart for their budget office and so they, they called him head of data analytics. And not many cities have a head of data analytics, but so he was economic development director, head of data analytics. And he put together a lot of stuff. I actually, I mean, I skipped through, um, well, so further down, there are some slides that like, they'll just numb your mind in terms, you know, like stuff like this, like he looks at residential square. Like he looks at residential square footage and commercial square footage per worker, and compares and contrasts them basically to to show where you are on the spectrum of how uh, desirable and usable um, your county is compared to other, I mean, it's.
I did try to read that.
It it is, it is MBA type of stuff, and so uh, we didn't need to get into it. I think uh, the the basics are more important for sure, and if anyone wants to uh, get crazy, I'm happy to get Eric on the phone and we can go through it, so.
And a quick side question. On one of the first slides, you, it was the median home prices versus the median borrowing power. And it looks like our buying power has dropped.
Yes. Well, and I I mean, that's that's inflationary powers.
That's just because of inflation.
Yes, yeah. And and so you you can.
Those bars, that's so depressing.
And and it's, I mean, you can say whatever you want about the state of Utah, but the fact that we have the third or fourth or fifth highest housing prices in the country means that a lot of people who could move anywhere else for a lot less money want to move here anyway, which is, which is a pretty commendable thing, you know, and and we can argue whether that's good or bad, but I mean, it it is, it is the fact of life that that people would rather pay five hundred thousand dollars for a home here than a hundred and eighty thousand in Illinois. And you could get the same home.
So was this January seventeenth, eighteenth, negative, do we fluctuate that much in like five days or?
That's here.
That's here.
January twenty seventeen.
Oh, so those aren't like dates, it's a year.
Yeah.
You say that twenty twenty four is even more disparate.
Yep. And and I, I don't know when we can build a lot of housing and we can
Yeah.
arrest every illegal, I guess, but if, you know, but I don't know that that undoes the the imbalance of the upward pressure on housing prices. I mean, we saw people in Mapleton, even though mortgage rates are really high, which depresses home prices, because it makes the the borrowing power uh, more costly, we're still seeing people pricing things at at rate, I don't know how well, well, they're selling, but prices haven't come down a lot. I'm sure you've seen the same thing here. It's like, it's, it's not like, it's not like homes are twenty percent less expensive because mortgage rates are high. Um, so we're kind of just still dealing with the same issues.
Well, Brian, thank you again very much. Education to use right away. Thank you. Okay, next we have a presentation regarding a proposed public infrastructure district, PID for Slate Canyon Development with Leonard Homes. This will be presented by Betsy Fowler and Megan Murphy. Betsy Fowler, Russell.
Thank you. And I believe some of my colleagues were going to join by Zoom. Are they? Connie is one from the the underwriter, and I believe Megan Murphy will be online as well.
I'm saying Megan Murphy.
Okay.
Oh. Bonnie and Colin, okay. Not saying Megan Murphy.
It's okay, if she's, if she may join, if you want to just keep an eye out, so.
So you're Betsy?
I'm Betsy, yes.
Thank you for joining.
Thank you, and thanks for having us. Um, though we're talking about this project, uh, it's the Slate Canyon PID for the first time. Uh, this project itself has been before you uh, numerous times. Uh, I I think most, uh, in particular, most is uh, it happened last July when the developer came before you with the development plan. And uh, there was extensive discussion, not about the PID, but about the development policy itself. There was also, and we'll get into this, uh, the resolution prior to that or with that, um, that was passed last July to amend the critical hillside overlay zone in relation to this property. Um, it was referred to as the Buckley Draw property previously. Uh, and so, do I have the ability to, is this, is this me? Okay, all right. Well, half the presentation, half of the, the points that I was going to make were made in the last, uh, the last presentation. Uh, there may be more questions or questions, obviously very specific to uh, to this governing document and this project. Uh, I am an attorney with White Bear, um, Ankle, Tanaka and Waldron. And uh, we will be, if the PID uh, is established, we will be counsel to the PID, but we're brought on board by the developing team. I have, the the Lennar folks are here with us today to answer very specific questions about the development. And we also have DA Davidson, Sam Elders, who are to answer questions about the uh, the bond structuring, um, specifically. So we'll, we'll move into that. Don't know quite what button to push or where to aim. Where do I aim?
Aim right here.
Oh, right there, okay.
Here, I can show you.
Is it this button on the side? Sorry, Justin.
Oh, you're good. Back.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Thank you. Okay, obviously, we're here for the Slate Canyon Public Infrastructure District. Um. And it should be in the packet materials that you have, should be the governing document uh, or the proposed governing document, but there is also the uh, the letter of intent and also the petition to go along with the property or with the project. The uh, the governing document typically, and by, by the way this is done in other cities or other counties, um, usually there is the LOI and petition that are submitted. Uh, this city will then give some feedback and ask for the governing document, um, but it depends on the municipality or where we are. Um. I don't need to do a summary of public infrastructure districts, because that has already been done. And um, you have the governing document, I believe, in your materials. We wanted to get feedback, um, from you, from the community. Uh, there has, uh, I think has already stated, I don't want to repeat a lot that was already done, but in two thousand twenty one, uh, the first PID, uh, and I believe it was the first PID in the state of Utah, uh, you guys uh, passed for the medical campus, uh, the Norda College. Uh, we're here a few years later. There was also a a lot of discussion, and I know it was mentioned in the previous meeting uh, about the role of PIDs, whether Provo would uh, would adopt a PID policy. Uh, and here we are, like we said, three years later, three and a half years later, um, you don't have a PID policy in place. Um, I'm not sure if that's something you're still considering, but we're happy to to talk on that as well. Um, but we'll, we're happy for any feedback. Obviously, uh, the PID Act um, was passed in Utah first in two thousand nineteen and uh, is undergoing different uh, different legislative changes. Um, but essentially has only been in Utah for the past three years, four years. And, um, the uh, there are of lots of other states that have used PIDs or special districts um, for financing structures. And we can talk more specifics here. Uh, I think this was also covered. The reasons for the PID, uh, it addresses uh, not necessarily a lack of existing funding, but it creates a, an avenue for funding for infrastructure improvements. And uh, I think the time factor uh, is extremely helpful, because it facilitates the timely implementation of the public infrastructure as we're looking at completing a development. Uh, also, uh, as mentioned previously, it does provide a financially responsible solution to support growth, and it's not necessarily connected to the finances of the city. And feel free to ask any questions. Whether I have answers to those questions is is a different matter, but if you have questions, um, feel free to chime in. Um. As as was stated, it's up to the city council, uh, in that governing document, the city council essentially establishes the criteria um, that the the public district or infrastructure district will be bound by. Uh, and so uh, there, there are pros and cons, uh, as you have discussed and questions have been asked. Uh, what we would uh, ask you to keep in mind, obviously, is the historical performance of the, of the district applicant. Here, uh, the original developer, uh, R and D, it was Dave Morton, who um, I believe worked with the city and the staff was uh, phenomenal in coming up with uh, the development agreement that is in place now. Um, Lennar Homes uh, is a fantastic company. We'll talk more about that as well as a builder, as for the creditworthiness of the district applicant. Uh. I'm trying to see what we can skip through and don't need to talk about. Um, we will talk more about the proposed development and when our team will cover that. Uh, historically, I've kind of al- already touched on this. This isn't the exact, um, master plan, but this is one that I think uh, you have seen before. Uh, the, the actual documents are in the packet. Uh, but this is to create, this, this PID would be essentially to construct a hundred and ten residential home sites. And uh, it would include access to the hiking trails, community garden, pickleball courts. And one thing that's, does this have a little pointer? Maybe, maybe not. Do I have this? Oh. Well, uh, I'm not sure how familiar, I I I think everybody's familiar with where this area is. Uh, so there will be connection, you see the trailheads, uh, the public hiking trails that will connect up to the old Bonneville Shoreline Trail, um, and then up essentially into the Slate Canyon Trailhead. Um. As mentioned, there has already been the zoning, uh, the the zoning ordinances and regulations amended um, back in July. And currently it is the R one point eight zoning ordinance. Any questions here or on numbers or, okay? I guess I asked, but I didn't look to see if there were. Uh, this again is a given, um, about what the public ins- infrastructure will fund. Um, obviously, the public utilities, water, sewer, drainage improvements. Uh, there was much talk about uh, the watershed and where water would go. I believe now it's, it's arranged to go down into the the bicentennial park. Um. The public utilities, and as we mentioned, the trails and open space to be dedicated uh, to the city from the district. Whoop. Uh, specific to this project, the maximum debt mill levy for this project is the six mills. Um, under statute, um, as was mentioned previously, uh, allowable up to the fifteen, um, uh, mills, but here asking for the six mills with a maturity rate uh, of thirty years. Uh, upon which time the the PID, um, basically there would be dissolution or or dissolvement of of the need for the PID. Um. One difference between the initial application that I'm not sure you saw here, uh, initially the placeholder amount was a a ten million dollar amount. That has been reduced to a five million dollar tax debt limitation. And that's based on the engineer's uh, cost. Um, and that is part of the uh, petition that you have in your packet. Estimated cost, uh, four million, seven hundred thousand. And then the tax limitation that we're asking for obviously needs to be a little bit more to be able to cover uh, any cost of inflation or unseen or undue expenses as time passes. When we look at the twenty twenty four tax rates, uh, and this is the question we tend to get most often, is is what exactly is it going to mean to a homeowner? This is based on the actual market value of a home at six hundred thousand, uh, which the assessed value at fifty five percent would be three hundred and thirty. We see the different taxing entities in this graph. And the the tax amounts that they charge and the percent compared to the the PID mill rate uh, of of six mills, we see that yearly total then come to approximately uh, the one thousand nine hundred and eighty, uh, about a hundred and sixty five dollars per month. Um, and that would be the cost, the tax cost for the homeowner.
And then when that PID matures in thirty years, that disappears.
That disappears, yes.
Good question. So is that roughly just under two thousand dollars per household going to be flat throughout the thirty years?
Uh, no, from my, from my understanding, um, uh, that's a very good question. Uh, that, that tax amount changes per the assessed value. So where the property is assessed yearly and that the property taxes are assessed, that point zero zero six, uh, the six mills adjusts based on the property value.
But that's a year's worth of tax.
That's a year's worth, yeah.
Right, but that usually, I mean, if half, how I understand this, is if the city requires thirty thousand dollars, that is spread out amongst all of the residents within, or, you know, taxable entities within Provo, and then that mill rate adjusts according to, you know, you know, the inflation of the house or whatever, so it can go down, right, as long as we're keeping that constant amount. So what I'm thinking is the payback is probably going to be constant. And that mill rate's going to adjust, but you're saying no?
No, the mill rate, the mill rate stays unless there's a refinancing that happens.
So does that make me pay it off faster?
To chime in and and speak to this, but I believe that the the six mills stays in place unless there is a a refinancing that happens. So the actual amount and the percentage that will be paid, yes, that number uh, that will be fluid and it will move, and this is just to give you a snapshot estimate based on the two thousand twenty four.
Does the loan have a variable interest rate or is it a fixed interest rate?
No, it's a, it's a fixed interest rate.
So does that make it a fix goes up to twenty five hundred dollars and the debt's going to be paid off faster?
Yeah, so I can describe that a little bit more. Um, Sam Elder and DA Davidson may be acting as an underwriter instead. Um, so the the tax rate in governing document that would be decided by the council to get approved would be set, right, to a maximum amount they could impose, which you would, in this particular instance, the development team is asking for six months, so they did not impose more than six months. But to your point, as assessed value can increase over time, that mill levy remains constant. But if that inflation in assessed value outpaces the projected absorption or bond schedule, then the bond would get repaid more quickly or get refinanced. And typically, in these deals and almost every deal that we do, let's say they initially go out with six mills, as the board transitions to the homeowners who live there, they'll refinance the debt and lower the mill levy. So today it starts out at six, but in year five or year six, when the development's completed and there's a hundred and ten different property owners making tax payments, they'll choose to lower the mill levy imposed because things are going better or things are going badly. And so, um, you you'll see all of these mill levers get reduced by by some margin at some point, because the develop, because the homeowners ultimately choose to decide to lower that.
That's, that's generally what you're saying, but that's not necessarily.
It it's, if the development doesn't happen as planned, there could be the potential that that the six mills remains outstanding. But there are structural components in the bond that say, even if the development happens according to plan, it's still going to get better. And the reason why is because, for example, when we originally issued the bonds, we're projecting out that the developer's going to build a hundred homes over five years. That's a pretty risky investment for an investor to take, saying, oh, they're going to build these homes over the next five years. These product types are going to come in at this price point, the assessor's going to assess the home at this price, and that should repay them, you know. But when, once built out, there's a hundred and ten unique property owners making a tax payment, the credit becomes diverse, it becomes like a made city. Right? And so we'll issue the bonds at a higher rate today, but once there's a hundred and ten homes, we can refinance the debt at a lower interest rate, because it's a more diverse tax base that's making a payment. One person misses their, their tax payment, it doesn't impact the the debt service.
Have you seen that even with the rise in inflation?
Yeah, I mean, I think inflation would actually help repay these bonds more quickly, because there would be more tax revenue coming in.
No, I mean, I mean, like in twenty twenty, you had a PID in twenty twenty, let's say you had a three percent. Right, interest rate, right? And then today is seven percent. So obviously, you can really refine that into these rates. I mean, are you still seeing that today, even though the interest rates are so high?
Yeah, that's a good question. So with the amount of increases that rates have gone over the last little bit, the refinancing, even if you got the credit enhancement, meaning the security of the deal became better, you're not necessarily going to refinance then, because the interest, the macro environment increased substantially. So that could happen, for sure.
So they just sit on it for the.
So, so the bonds could, so if if they don't pay by year thirty. So, so the bonds could, so if, if they don't pay by year thirty, there's a ten-year discharge date. That means that the taxes can be collected for an additional ten years before the district will dissolve. So if the bonds haven't been repaid by year forty, the district goes away and the tax goes away no matter what. Bondholders just sort of lost.
And my next question is, why would we wanna do this for you? What did we get out of it?
Well, uh, when you're saying for you, so I, I would represent, I would be counsel for the districts. You may wanna direct that question towards the developer, the developer. Um, and I'll, and I'll answer that as to what benefits I see or, or why. Why a pit is a good idea in, in the economy of today. Was there another question that goes with that or?
Well, I'm just gonna answer it.
Oh, go ahead.
I think one thing is that those, those um comparables we got, right, from that other development that they were looking at. We've required all these to be homeowner occupied. That's a huge deal. It's a huge, it's a huge thing that we got in return for this development. And. The prices are gonna probably lower those houses because they can't be bought by investors. So we'll keep the prices, not getting no kind of jacked up like our investor, when investor pools come in. And so they may be paying a bit more on the tax side of it. But they're gonna get homeownership with the community, it's all homeownership. It's well maintained and kept and has all the benefits of the roads, the trails and the fencing and the trail walkways and the pickleball. So I, I think we're gonna have to do some give and take to get these developments we want that can cre- create and improve homeownership. And give people an opportunity to start climbing that ladder.
So I, that, that raises a question in my mind about, well, I mean, is, didn't we already get that in the original decision? And if not, uh, or if, even if we did, if we create a P I D with that incentive, which I. You know, I share the goal, but I'm worried that it creates the press every time we say. We approve this, but we want this percentage homeownership, then, then it sort of defaults to, well, you gave a P I D. To this development, now you've gotta give on here and, and then it just becomes an expectation. So I, I don't know.
This is an area that has zero infrastructure, which is hard.
And there is no, it built into the governing document, there is no guarantee, um, you know, uh. There is no guarantee that the next project will be approved. Um, it was the, the work that was done leading up to this meeting where with the developer, um, I. That I saw that the homeowner occupancy, the one-year occupancy, um, was put in to that development agreement. It is in the development agreement that's in the packet today. Um, and that does pass to the next, the next buyer. So it's a one-year.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to hear the but for that we, that we were just learning about, like what?
It's a, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great question to ask, and I would, you know, I just have, haven't been in. Many of these meetings across the state where these have been approved. You're looking for particular features within a development where this type of tool makes sense. Because I do not believe that this tool makes sense for every project. There are certain projects where a developer will approach us and say, hey, can you help us analyze and go into a city? And help them present on why a P I D would be needed for this project. And we would say, sorry, it isn't. You know, go find traditional forms of capital, there, to raise, to, to pay for this project. Some of the features here, I mean, obviously development features, right, when you're approving something in a development agreement. You know, you, you could say, I want these types of things, but there has to be a give, right? How can you, how can you pay for these things? These tools could definitely help that. In this particular instance, you know, that was done out of good faith, I think. To, to some extent where they're approaching you now on a P I D after they've already agreed to do that. But there are certain elements within this development that I think are difficult, right? You, you're, you're, you're improving an area of the city that hasn't been developed very frequently or is not. You know, as easy to access, so you're gonna have to bring infrastructure further, which is offensive. Um, to Brian's point earlier, you know, trying to get banks to come in and provide capital for offsite improvements. Before you're able to deliver your first home for repayment of their loan is really difficult. Especially as interest rates started to, to click, click up and, you know, uh, banks started to dry up on the amount of capital they had to lend. Um, the other things here are the amenities, right? When you're looking at potentially imposing additional tax on someone, it's like, what are you getting out of this? Right? You look at this, over forty percent of the, of the site is open space, right? In order to make that pencil, right, you gotta have efficient financing vehicle to be able to fund that, especially upfront. So you think about parks and trails, pickleball courts, other public amenities are things you wanna point to is like, how are you gonna finance these things? So I think as the development, as you're looking at this deal, they're looking for some efficient capital to help offset some of those costs. As you saw, the total cost of public improvements here is about four point seven million to deliver a hundred and ten homes. The bonds at six mills are only gonna net them about one and a half million dollars. So they're only asking for it to cover some portion of the development, and this is an ultra-efficient way for them to do so. So I think those are the things that you point to, right? As, as what is, what's unique about this development that you may not see when you're doing some infill location development right in the heart of the city.
I guess my pushback a little bit would be, wouldn't you have that as a developer all in line? The three dollars? You should have everything applied.
Yeah, when you're underwriting the deal, right, when you're choosing to purchase it or not purchase it, right?
Yeah.
People are making those decisions. I think sometimes there are some things that are unexpected, like cost increases. Or you wanna provide something that you didn't originally think you wanted to, or some enhancement to the community. I think these are ways to make it work better, right? So here, here's how I kind of view it, and this is just an opinion. But I think when you go in to create, in the approval on a development agreement, and the city's agreeing with that, um. You, you're, you're approving the development that you want to see happen in your city. And if it's difficult to, to facilitate that by using something like this, you're providing a tool to actually see that through. Right? So I think it is giving the ability for this project to have more of a chance at success. To deliver what you were ultimately looking for when you approved the development agreement.
But are they bound by the development agreement anyway?
They are, it's just, you know, sometimes deals go sideways because they're unable to finance, because they're not able to obtain the right capital to do it.
But then they'd have to come back and ask.
I mean, the development agreement or, you know, the deal goes under and they sell some other person who. You know, de- develops in the next ten, fifteen years since they're potentially, it's a blind area. I'm not necessarily suggesting that's the case here, not saying that we're not gonna deliver what they said in their development agreement without this. But I do think it can enhance the community, and we're likely to provide all of those amenities and infrastructure upfront. Without having to wait for the last unit to be delivered before they add capital to buy some of those amenities.
Thank you.
All right, very good questions. Thank you, Sam. I keep pressing the wrong button. Um, obviously, this is talking about the governance and oversight. Uh. I think we have already covered that, but the governing document here provides for, uh, it, it would be a board of five, I believe. And initially, uh, those individuals will be appointed by the city council. And then as the area is populated based on percent, then they would have individuals voted onto the board. Um. So they would represent themselves essentially. Um, the board. And, and one thing I think that's really interesting and, and worth noting here, and this was noted by Randy Larson when they were discussing P I Ds, is that. Uh, the, the, the purpose of the P I D, uh, isn't, they don't have the, uh, the power or the ability to create ordinances. Or they're here as a, a, as a financing tool or a financing mechanism. Um, strictly that. So when we look at the governance and oversight, um. I agree with Brian's comment, that not super exciting for, for those board members. And, um, I think.
So when you say appointed by the city council, you don't mean nominated, you mean approved, because we have the slate here.
Yes, those names are in the petition, uh, before you, and they are all agents of, uh, the developer property owner. Um, and right now there are no, and that's a one requirement of the governing document. Um, or of the pit is that one hundred percent of the property owners, uh, have to agree to the creation of the pit. And so that's where we have here this undeveloped ground, so the developer, uh, has agents that are the essential, uh, the, the members of the pit board. I think Sam, uh, has covered, or these issues have mainly been covered. Uh, I do wanna touch upon, uh, just Lennar, the site plan, uh, the development agreement. Um, it's a fantastic development agreement and it, I, I believe that the P I D. Certainly does ensure the high quality infrastructure, instead of a piecemeal that you see at times when some financing comes. Or all of the financing is required upfront, um, with the, the P I D, we can see, or the, a public infrastructure district financing. Uh, you can see that, that high quality from the very beginning. And, uh, I'll, I'll defer to the Lennar team. Did you have anything that you wanted to add today to, to this or to answer in addition to any of the questions? Uh, either B J or, or Xander?
Wait, before you address that, I do have one more to Georgia's point earlier. The savings that you would get from a P I D versus a regular loan. Where's that gonna go? Is that one in your pocket or is that going to lower the prices of the, the homes or?
So my answer to that is, so the savings. A P I D will create for, I think traditionally what you see is you see a developer who, uh, would pay for the whole project. And then the cost of the home goes onto the, the homeowner initially or upfront. Here what we see is those costs can be lowered because the, the, the homeowner is agreeing to pay on a tax base over a thirty-year period of time. And so it flattens that cost and the developer's able to, to use a, a lower price point and a more affordable home. And there was, uh, there was much talk with this developer about the price point being very specifically within a certain range to try to help. Uh, with the city's view, uh, in this area in particular. I hope that answers the question. I didn't mean to, to. I'm sorry?
That's something we can put on the P I D is that the, the savings goes to the home, not necessarily to the developer?
Uh, I don't think it's necessarily in the P I D language, but it's the nature of the financing mechanism. Because you're spreading the payment over thirty years, um, it, it is the purpose of the P I D.
Thank you.
So my name is J R I Armholz. So if you have any questions about what we are, about what we do, it's a great time to ask it. Um, as you saw, the developers agreement, uh, we've already submitted what our interiors look like. So we know, you know, what we're building. Uh, a question was interesting. The development costs are the development costs. Uh, so it, we will, we get that from that, but. On the, the copy and maybe it's affordable housing, because now you're not buying the full value of the house. Yes, they have to pay back, but it essentially allows us to pay for it. And the arm is not, uh, improving that, but you've been there, but there's a portion of it that's spread.
Can you put the microphone to your mouth, please? It's hard to hear online.
Is the mic not on?
Oh.
Thank you, maybe I'll down.
He can come up. Yeah?
Yeah, that's fine.
How's that?
Yeah. Looks better, thank you.
Yes, you bet. So, so there is, there is a, it's, it spreads the cost out. We still get paid for the infrastructure we solve, but the homeowner is gonna pay that price. There's a tale that they pay. Also, when you buy a house, you have to buy a house in full. If you have a P I D, if you wanna live in the house for five years, your exposure to the, it's only five years. So it's interesting, it's new, uh, but, but that is, that's the, to a home. For us personally, I think there were some questions about how quickly, uh, there was a mention, what happens if things fall apart? Uh, we are an extremely sound company, uh, we are in the second largest builder country. We have eighty thousand home units this year. Uh, we are very well capitalized. We are very well supported in what we do. So what would you like to know about us? What would you like to, what, what would you like to know of anything? Would you like to know, there was talk about, oh, what happens if things fall apart down the road? Um, historically, that doesn't happen to us. Uh, we will be building six homes a month after we start the speed. Uh, we don't vary from what we do. We say we're gonna do six a month, we're doing six a month. We're not waiting for six buyers to show up, we're building six. But if you pay that six homes a month, by, by, you know, one ten, got six homes a month, we're gonna do this. Extremely good. So therefore, you get the large group of people, how many of the tech. Back to our backseat, you know, the question about what happens down the road, going to my home stuff, actually, they have some options. Uh, to refund, but we went through this community very well. Uh, we are a party shopping home builder, we are an own titled company, uh, we incentivize, uh, to work with us. So we are very well, and we will get this, uh, through, uh, through the engineering. Uh, portion of, of our design, and we will do it very extrudiously. We, we would love to be turning dirt in two months, and right now we are targeting building homes at the beginning of August. We have a plan.
And that includes infrastructure?
Yes, so, yes, it does. Um. Uh, there is a big portion of the open space, which we will have an impact on. Uh, but we will coordinate with the city for the, um, trailhead restroom, trailhead parking lot. Uh, we have some of our own infrastructure, such as pickleball courts, some raised beds, uh, some playroom equipment, uh, sofa monarch. Uh, we try and get that infrastructure installed. As we get, so sometimes we can't, you know, sometimes we can't do everything at once, just because logistically we can't. But for us to have our amenities in upfront as quick as possible, um, it makes the community perceivable, makes it look better. We have, uh, homeowners who will be paying each way fees, so the quicker we get their, their amenities and the quicker they see value.
What's the anticipated price point on these homes right now, the range?
I think we're in the five fifties.
Oh, yeah, but.
So with five fifty, the numbers we saw earlier for six hundred were about two thousand a month. So that's about sixty thousand over a thirty-year period. Um, that they would be paying on that, right? But maybe not necessarily one owner the whole time because it could be sold subsequently. All right. Well, that's kind of, it's, it's not affordable housing, but it's in line with what we're charging for everything else, and it's not.
The price is amazing.
Yeah, for the size of these homes.
What's the square footage of these ones?
All much bigger than my house. And the.
Basin?
Yes.
Eighteen to twenty-four, or, or anything?
The basin is, I think, these are, I think, the project, so, you know, including basin, and I think the all these are well, they're five hundred square feet, like a hundred and, over a thousand square feet.
Yeah, so that price per square footage is pretty good.
Can I say something on that?
Yeah.
The price point of the home is the thing that I was maybe most nervous about this project. Because as careful as I think Anderson was, Anderson Development, going through the entitlement process. We've seen so many times, developer makes commitments, like price point, and like it's sold to the builder, and the builder actually costs everything else. Has to pay for every foot of asphalt and every shingle. The builder says, I can't do it for that, and we have to get this whole renegotiation. It was my recollection that that price point wasn't a important thing to the council. It was never imagined to be affordable housing, it was never imagined to be workforce housing, but it was promised to start in a more reasonable price range. To me, that's the benefit, if P I D helps deliver that price range, then it's worth it. To me, that's much more important than the trail and even the pickleball courts, as much as I have admitted that. But the price points is what. the trail and even the pickleball courts, as much as I admit that, but the price points is what really seemed to me.
Yeah, that price range seems to be incredibly reasonable for that size product in our current market.
But if one is resold, it'd be so poor market rate, okay? So it won't be as affordable again. It's just, the PID is just gonna make it affordable, just for entrance into, it has to be also occupied, so it can't be bought by the investor.
You have to flip that on again. I just turned it on.
Yeah, I'm trying to add a little bit more input there. Um, I think you you can't control the market value of a home, right? And so I think you can only choose at the beginning what you sell it for, right? Which is to try to make it as attainable from a market-based standpoint. But I do think this is true that when you purchase a home, you're purchasing a home inclusive of so many different elements, right? Whether that be location, the size of the lot, the size of the home, right? The direction it faces. Some people like west facing, some people like east facing. You can't build the same home, right? Exactly the same basically anywhere, because one's slightly different even in the townhome. Um, and so I think when people analyze what they're purchasing in terms of a home and they're disclosed about what they're purchasing, people make decisions on the price point that they think they'll buy it at, right? And so I don't think it's always dictated, but but I guess the point what I'm trying to make is that I think additional property taxes with the PID are part of that analysis, right? Just like an HOA is. Some people choose to buy property within an HOA, some people choose not to do that. I think you're gonna have the same thing here. Some people are gonna choose to avoid buying this product because it's a part of a PID, but that was their choice. But because they have this vehicle in place, they're able to deliver things more rapidly, more quickly, and provide the amenities upfront. Where this house might not have liked to be there. That's not always the case for this particular instance, but what I'm saying is it does, it is something that people will bake into the overall price. And 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 one last thing I just mentioned, because I think it's important for a- as you have these discussions in Utah. Is it it is new, it is, it passed since two thousand and nineteen. People are still becoming familiar with these. There there's over a hundred and fifty PIDs created now in the state. They're being used for all large master plan communities and ones that have a lot of offsite. But but what I would say is that these tools have been around in other states for decades. They're called CDDs in Florida, they're called PIDs in Texas, right? They're they're being used for every master plan community. I think there was something on like the top two hundred master plan communities in the in the nation, ninety-eight percent were using a special district such as these. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I I know it's new here, and and buyers are gonna have to get familiar with it. I think there's gonna be some uncertainty going into these first ones, but it is becoming more familiar and it has been used for a long time.
Can you remind me, is this an HOA as well?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
So it is an HOA. Part of the commitment in the uh developers agreement is that the front yard will be um maintained by the HOA. Uh, we're targeting targeting about a hundred and ten dollars a month. Uh, and the the big portion of that is the water and the maintenance and we in the in the front yards, as well as water for for some of the ornamental areas. The pickleball courts, the playground equipment, the raised beds, they don't require as much intense maintenance. And and, you know, we will uh uh we will have budgets that will take into account uh the perpetual maintenance over on those items over time. The water and front yard maintenance is a is a big portion of this uh monthly due for the HOA.
It's something normal homeowners would have to pay for, that they're not gonna have to pay for themselves, and it'll all be nice and uniform. They'll be saving them.
Brian or Justin, does this item require a vote at this time, or does it move to approve the governing document of the PIT? Would that go to a council meeting?
So um, really, at the direction of council, uh, what we would need is do you need more information? Is there is there information you would like staff to work with the developer uh and with their legal counsel on to help you feel more comfortable? Um. I'm trying to think. I was not here in twenty twenty-one when we approved the first PIT, but.
All right, I'll be the takeover of this meeting.
Can you hear me? I I I think it probably helped from my just next step. I think the the purpose of today's meeting was just to get feedback from the staff. Hear you guys' concerns, hear how we can address them. I understand exactly what the council might be thinking about. And then, you know, essentially, in order to even get one of these approved, it has to be a a a two-week noticing period. Right? To open it up for a public meeting, and then and then after public comment, you could technically vote on it afterwards. Um, I don't think that's being asked to rush to that decision right now. I think it's more, let's see what the what the staff and you know, questions are and and where everybody's thoughts might be, and then we can tailor, you know, or amend the governing document according to some of the feedback that we're receiving to get it more in line with what um the councils.
And that transparency continues with the PIT board as well. Uh, they are required to abide by open meetings laws. Uh, everything essentially they do is is transparent as well.
Uh, so our legal department reviews these documents?
No.
Okay, that will need to happen.
Any other concerns or questions? Yes.
Well, I, yeah, I'm I'm still struggling to hear the but for argument, and and so I think maybe some feedback on on that would be helpful for me to feel more comfortable with this. I mean, because we already approved the development agreement, it was agreed upon. Um, so I can understand why the PIT is helpful, but I don't see that I'm I'm worried about setting a precedent that after the effect, uh, after the fact, uh, because as I understand it, most PIDs are created beforehand or during the process of settling on the development agreement. So I'm I'm worried about um not being able to point to something specific that this project's now going to have that it wasn't going to have without it. Um, and that seems to be the most important principle of what a PIT is for, so if if we can hear more about that, that would make me feel more comfortable.
I I think my first answer is the ability to pay upfront uh for the the cost uh initially. It it will allow for faster development. And uh, I think the fair distribution of the of the cost, Sam, I know you were going to.
No, I was just gonna say, let us let us circle up and come back with a but for argument, or at least a statement to say like, this is what we believe it is providing.
Isn't it true that the prices will be, the houses will be more expensive?
Overall, if without it.
It for the people, for the people buying them, the houses will cost more initially.
I I think the argument could be made by Lennar that that's the case, yeah, they're not able to absorb them this quickly, so you know, because they're not gonna be able to put as much on market, you know, the weight at certain price points to provide the the amenities that we're talking about. I'd wonder to pay for them.
But Lennar did just tell us that they're very well capitalized.
That doesn't mean that this is less efficient than, the the what we're saying is this is more efficient capital than what they could get otherwise, right? It's not to say that they're, they don't have efficient capital relative to other developers.
We don't have a blank pit. We we have a responsibility to.
But I think what George is saying is he would, he'd strike me from rocks. But I think what he's saying is he would have rather have had this come before us with the zone change. So now we're setting a precedent to do this with you, after we've already agreed with this, now for we've already had this contractual environment. And sweet dog.
What's the additional consideration?
I I would just like to add that we we purchased this land from a developer uh that got that development agreement approved. We did not uh give the development.
But you did purchase it subject to that development agreement. You knew what you.
And I think what you see too is in Texas and Colorado and other places in Florida where they have had PIDs uh or special service districts for thirty years, that has been the process, where the PIT Act was only passed in two thousand and nineteen and had, I I think the first PIT in two thousand and twenty-one, um, the developers, this is now happening in Utah. Um, they didn't start with that, but we're seeing that now. Um, a- as council, we have been brought on um by different players um throughout the state, by the bond underwriters or um the developer, because the process has been a little bit different in Utah as we get going. Will that always be the case? No, I think essentially uh the PIT request will come earlier in the process as we see happening in other places.
So I guess, and I think you're kind of getting what I'm putting out. We don't want to do this again. We would prefer it to come with its own changes, is what I'm hearing. So comes back to us with a really great argument of why we should be alone case.
Yeah.
Future of it.
Uh, I think I think the feedback is great. What we're hearing, we hear you a lot of clutter. I think it's for us to go loop in and say, hey, look up, you know, internally and say, hey, look, what are we providing? What is the but for? I would say something that you could do with Brian is create a PIT policy that says, hey, we're not gonna consider a PIT unless you come in during your zone change. Or get, put put something within a PIT policy that says, if if everyone agrees to that, that that's how you want to see it. That changes the way that it happens going forward, and maybe this is the exception, right? Because of what they, is their argument for why they need it or why it will be helpful. I think you can go and say, going forward, we're gonna change this, make sure that you know, we're not gonna consider a PIT unless you do it at this time.
I I was just gonna suggest the exact same thing. I think that's really wise counsel, that if that position is something that the council as a whole uh believes, I think putting in the policy probably with some, it's probably gonna have to be some exceptions to it, so then you probably need to define what the criteria for those exceptions are. Now, having said that, I don't know, Bill's still here? Bill left? I think that the last one, I think that the um medical school one came after the development agreement too. I I think that it actually is probably more likely than not that that's how it will happen because of exactly what Bill said a few minutes ago, that the 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 developer comes in and gets the zone change and does the development agreement without having actually costed out the entire project. Then sells the project and the and the builder, when they cost out, realize it doesn't make sense, and then is going to come. So my I'm totally on board with if it's the council's will to put into policy that that's not what we want. My guess is that it's probably the more frequent scenario rather than the less frequent scenario.
It it has been so far to date. Um, we've seen development agreements. It's it's been a rare occasion that people are asking for a PIT prior to getting the development agreement. But I but I but I would say that there also could be the chance that someone wants to ask for a PIT and get a development agreement amended in those discussions. So you might not want to close the door entirely, because then potentially you could ask for a development and then it provides something else that you guys want. But then the development that you're not able to scale.
How is a PIT disclosed to prospective buyers? Is that in closing?
Yeah, it's always, if you want to insert that.
I think there's.
It's like eight, six, or seven times throughout the process that they're disclosed.
So the MLA report, the uh the title reports, the the disclosures are required to have it as well. So it's, I know for certain it's in four different places.
Okay.
We we've also had governing documents approved on the city council, add additional provisions. So like a separate piece of paper in their sales office in a certain font size, saying you're subject to this additional tax. Uh, so there are other mechanisms that the city council can have. We've been having those in as standard to our documents uh to 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 try to help make sure buyers can fully disclose.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Betsy. We appreciate your presentation today and very helpful. We'll look forward to that additional information from you. The council will now consider a motion to close the meeting. Brian?
We have two brief items to discuss in closed meeting. Uh, one involves uh pending or reasonably imminent litigation. The other involves character and competence of an individual. As we've discussed many times, those are both reasons for a closed meeting under the statute, so it'd be appropriate for a motion at this time.
Motion to close the meeting by councillor McKay with a second by councillor Hoben. Vote, councillor?
Yes.
Councillor?
Yes.
Councillor Garrett? Yes, councillor Hendley?
Yes.
Councillor McKay?
Yes.
Councillor Hoben?
Yes.
Councillor Christensen?
Yes.
All right, the meeting is adjourned.